Good afternoon, everybody. Salaam alaikum. May I welcome members and the viewing public for this meeting in the City Council. Please can I have the monitoring officer, David Hollis, to announce the housekeeping arrangements? David?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Please can I request members of the public familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from security attendants, who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Please can I also request everyone to switch electronic devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. Today's meeting will be webcast and the recording will be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Webcasting notices providing further information are displayed in the public gallery. Members of the public are permitted to take photographs and to film or audio record the meeting, but the Lord Mayor, as Chair of the meeting, does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if that recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which would capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects are being filmed. Any member of the public, due to speak at the meeting, who does not wish to be filmed, should say so at the start of their speech, and the Lord Mayor will suspend their permission to film their contribution. The webcast will only record the audio contribution. Please may I request for safety reasons that no recording equipment, banner, or any other object is held over the balcony from the public gallery. Finally, can I ask members of the council if they are going to leave the chamber other than during the recognised breaks? Can they please ensure that Jason from Democratic Services is aware so we have a record of who is in the chamber at any one time, and also let him know when you return? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Please can I ask the members of the council to ensure they have logged into their microphone consoles. If for any reasons you are unable to do so, please seek assistance from the members of our Democratic Services team. Please also note that, as agreed with the WIPs, when we use the electronic voting system, there will be a time limited of 30 seconds for the conduct of each vote. I will strike the bell. I've got a hammer today, so I've got to strike with the bell, it's going to be fun. After 20 seconds for reminder. May I also give a notice that item 12 of the agenda for this meeting relating to changes of the constitution, it is to be withdrawn from the consideration and there it to be an urgent item of business added at the end of the agenda, to approve the change of the order of the notice of motions to be considered at the October and November meetings of this council. Finally, this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30pm, but I shall adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Before we start our formal business, I now propose to hold a minute silence for in memory of councillor Joan O'Derry Trickett, who served on the council from 1991 to 1999, representing the Chapel Green Ward, and who passed away recently. Please now join me in a minute silence in the memory. Thank you. Item number two, apologies for absence. Councillor Bellfield, Councillor Woodcock, Councillor Huggan, Councillor Fitz, Councillor Roslin, Councillor Woodcraft, Councillor Fox. Councillor Terry Fox will be arriving late. Item three, exclusion of the press and public. There are no items of business that requires the exclusion of the press and the public. Item four, declaration of interest. This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest of any item of the agenda that any members wish to declare interest. Item five, public petitions, questions and statements and other communications. The meeting today may include speeches on the ongoing conflict in Gaza, which has resulted in a huge suffering and loss of lives. There are also some public questions and statements on the issues, and some questions for members of the council. It is valid with such an important topic that strong emotions will be stirred up. We welcome that. But can I ask participants to consider their words carefully, to avoid terms that are or could have been seen as offensive, and to act respectfully towards their fellow members and citizens at all times? Elected members should be particularly mindful of the council's obligation under section 149 of the Equality Act 2010, which states that a public authority must, in the exercise of its functions, have due regards to the need to eliminate discrimination, harassment, victimisation and any other conduct that prohibited by the, under this act. B, advance equality and opportunity between persons who share a relevant protected characteristic and persons who do not share it. C, foster good relations between persons who share irrelevant protected characteristics and persons who do not share it. For the purpose of the Equality Act, both race, religion or belief are protected characteristics. Public questions, public petitions and statements. This council is able to encourage those that live and work in Sheffield to have their say in the work of the council by allowing public questions, statements, petitions to be represented as its formal decision-making meetings. For this meeting, we have received the following communication from members of the public. One ordinary petition, six supplementary questions resulting from 12 initial questions on matters related to the rimful of full council, two statements. Representations of the petition will be made at today's meeting and a response will be made by the relevant committee chair. The 12 initial questions received on the matters relating to the remit of full council will not be asked to the meeting because of the questions. And the responses for the leader of the council or relevant committee chairs have been published on the council's website. However, the supplementary questions that have been received will be asked to be responded to. The two statements received from the public have been published on the council's website and notified to all members of the council. If time allows, these statements can be read out at this meeting. Statements do not require a response by myself or a chair of the meeting. By myself as the chair of the meeting, or the leader of the council, or relevant committee chair, reserve the right to reply at the meeting. A period of 60 minutes is allowed in the total ordinary petitions and public questions and statements. Can I call upon the chief executive to announce the petition, and may I request the petitioners to be brief and to keep within their time limits of three minutes? May I also request that the relevant committee chairs keep within their maximum time of limited of five minutes when responding to the petition? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received a petition containing six signatures calling on the council to install double yellow lines on the opposite side of the road across from the entrance to Waterfall Close on Matthews Lane and on the corners at the junction of Matthews Lane and Waterfall Close. The lead petitioner is Diane Blackdon, who has joined remotely and wishes to address council. It is recommended that the petition is referred to councillor Ben Miskel, Chair of the Transport Regeneration Policy Committee, for a response.
Hello, Diane. Can you hear me?
Right, I'm not very good at these things, so I'll give it a go. We, the residents of Waterfall Close, as said, are petitioning for the double yellow lines. Waterfall Close is an unadopted road, which is very close to Nottingham Free Primary School. It's much narrower than the standard side road, possessing the appearance of a driveway rather than a road, and it has no curb. Because of this, children run straight across the road and treat it more as a path than a road due to its appearance. Cars park right up to the edge and regularly overhang the entrance, obstructing the access on and off Waterfall Close. Visual displays are severely affected, and you have to be in the middle of the road to see any traffic. Cars also park opposite the junction, making visibility worse and severely restrict the swing access on and off Waterfall Close. Residents' vehicles, including SEN school minibuses, are struggling daily to manoeuvre in and out of the road and to see pedestrians crossing, many of which are primary school children, posing a significant risk to them walking safely to and from school. It also causes an access issue for emergency vehicles. It's more than just an inconvenience, it is a safety issue that needs urgent attention before an accident or injury to pedestrians occur. The school minibuses have been stranded at the bottom of the road, unable to get the young person home, and it's caused that young person significant distress. By supporting this solution and placing double yellow lines, we will give a clearer safe arc room for vehicles and pedestrians alike, but will also promote an environment that will prioritise child safety for children walking to school. Outside of school times, there's also heavy parking due to events at Grace Park that can lead to overspilt onto our side road, and there's also a cricket pitch opposite that doesn't have an adequate car park. So again, we have lots of parking, particularly between Waterfall Close and Summer House Drive. We would welcome councillors and our staff from the relevant departments to visit during the times to see for themselves what we have to put up with. We would also welcome any other safety measures on Matthews Lane, as there is regular speeding, and there is a school and two nurseries on that small road. I have provided evidence photos to back up our concerns to Ben. Thank you very much for listening, and thank you for allowing me to join via video because of my fault. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for communicating really well. Can I ask councillor Ben Miskel, Chair of the Transport Regeneration and the Climate Policy Committee, to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Diane. I think you're the first person to join us remotely to present a petition to full council, and I'm really pleased that it worked very well. Now, you raised some important issues, didn't you, about Matthews Lane and Waterfall Close, and I'd like to thank you for raising those today, but also for the email exchanges that we've had over the last week. Now, councillor Banister has been in touch with me to highlight these issues, and I've also checked with Louise Hague MP's office about the history of the particular matter that you're talking about. In fact, I was reminded of a recent visit with councillor Horner in the south-east of the city, where we had a very similar discussion about parking too close to junctions. Now, you'll be aware, because you researched this issue and we spoke via email, but Rule 243 of the Highway Code makes it clear that vehicles shouldn't park within 10 metres, that's 32 feet of a junction, which means, of course, that people shouldn't be parking there in the first place. But unfortunately, that law can only be enforced by South Yorkshire Police. Now, as you'll appreciate, and as we've discussed via email, the council does receive a great many requests for yellow line restrictions right across the city, and we do keep a long list of locations where these could be sensible. But for them to be enforced, we have to make a formal traffic regulation order. Now, that involves a legal process, it involves advertising and the opportunity for objections. It's a time-consuming and expensive process, so we cannot give guarantees on any particular requests. However, that said, I'm going to ask our transport team to assess your request and rank it against other locations that are currently being considered. I'm also going to ask them to contact you directly about whether, since Waterfall Close is a private road, there might be another solution. And in particular, it might be possible to introduce what's known as a H-bar. Now, they are white lines that you often see across driveways or other access points. Now, the beauty of these markings is that they're advisory rather than regulatory, which makes them much cheaper and quicker to implement, and they don't require a formal legal process, and they're usually respected by motorists. So in many cases, they provide a simpler, more cost-effective solution to the kind of issues that you are experiencing. Now, I do want to thank you for bringing your petition here today on behalf of residents. It's a really important part of our democratic process. Now, because of the formality of how we deal with petitions in our council, I'm required to suggest a course of action within our governance system. So therefore, Lord Mayor, I'm happy to refer this to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee for them to note the recommended actions if they wish. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us, Diane, again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We shall now move to questions from the members of the public. May I ask the questioners to be as brief as possible and keep to the content they have submitted in writing in advance of this meeting? May I also ask that the leader of the council and the relevant committee chairs keep their response short and to the point? This is to ensure that as much time as possible is available for the public questions and for the other items of the business of the agenda for today's meeting. Thank you. May I call Mark Ash to the mic, please? Thank you. Mark Ash is not here. Thank you. May I call Jo Tomstall, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Councillor Hunt, you said in your response that it would be very unusual for a site promoter to put forward a piece of land if they don't already have evidence that the landowner is willing to make the land available. Well, that is exactly what JEH planning have done with site NES36 at Smithy Wood. Between the additional sites being released publicly on 24th of April and the council vote on 14th of May, councillors and officers were made aware that absolutely no consultation had taken place with two of the landowners of that site, and that this land was not and would not ever be made available. Why then, with this knowledge, was the plan allowed to proceed to council vote on 14th of May and still remain in the plan sent to the inspectors, causing the farmer in question significant stress and upset for many months until the inspector's process concludes? And secondly, do the council believe it is fair to leave this farmer in a state of anxiety over his land due to failings of JEH planning and the council to follow due process?
Thank you very much. Councillor Hunt, Chair of Strategy and Resources and Policy Committee, and the leader of the council to respond.
Thank you very much, Jo, for your questions. The following information has been provided to me in response to your question by planning officers, and I'm happy to share this with you in writing after the meeting. In response to your first question, the planning officers have shared that the work to identify the proposed additional site allocations, as you say, took place prior to papers being published at the Strategy and Resources Committee meeting on the 30th of April. Based on the evidence available from the site promoters at the time, the land at the site you're referring to, NES36, in the plan was deemed available for development. As has been highlighted, information came to light in the period between that committee meeting and the full council meeting on 14th of May that differed from the site promoter's position on the landowner's intentions. The six-week consultation periods that ran from May to July on those proposed additional site allocations was therefore an opportunity for landowners, such as the one you're referring to, to formally comment on the availability of sites as part of the examination process. This allows for the inspectors now to take into consideration both the landowner's representation as well as the site promoter's submission, and form an assessment as part of the public examination process. I'm sure, as you'll be aware, the next set of hearings around the local plan begin at the end of this month, and will then continue through into October. In response to the second question that you asked, the planning officers have shared that, similar to above, what I've just said, the landowner has had the opportunity during the public consultation period to make the inspectors aware of the ownership position on the site. The inspectors will use any information that's been submitted to come to a view about the availability of that piece of land and whether it can be included within the Sheffield Plan as part of this process. For the sites proposed to be as additional site allocations, the council accepted assurances provided by the site promoters that the sites were available, but again, it will be the examination period, the process, that will allow for that information submitted by both the landowners and the promoters to be fully considered by the inspectors, who will come to a well-reasoned, rounded view, taking into account all of that information. Three and a half thousand people, 3,600 people to be precise submitted views to the public consultation, and I really welcome the very high level of public engagement with the plan, and I thank everybody who submitted views to the consultation. It's absolutely right that the planning inspectorate take into account every one of those views, and that they hold dedicated hearings around those areas of the city, particularly S35 and S13, where there have been most representations, and that they take into account all of the views of residents, those in support, those against, those who provided additional clarifying information, and that is the right and proper way that this process will now continue. And I'm pleased that we're now moving into this next phase, so that in September, late September, the examiners will begin and will be able to look at the detailed information that you and others have provided. So thank you for coming, and I'll make sure that you get the technical bits I shared in writing with you.
Thank you very much. Can I call Gillian Travis, asking a question on behalf of Robert Ritchie, please? Thank you.
Councillor Hunt, you've said you want fairer distribution of sites, but this plan, which is being voted in under your leadership, still puts over 90% of green belt loss on Sheffield's working class communities. Adding one site at Lodge More is nothing more than tokenism. If fairness really was your aim, how was this allowed to happen, and where does the accountability lie for that decision?
Thank you, Gillian. Councillor Tom Hunt to respond, please?
Gillian, thank you very much for asking Robert Ritchie's question, and I should have said at the beginning, the question that Mark Ash was going to be providing today. We'll make sure that Mark gets an answer to that. Just on a matter of his accuracy, to make sure everyone's clear where we stand, final decisions have not yet been taken about the draft local plan. As we've just mentioned, the planning inspectorate will later this month begin the next phase of examination hearings, and if the plan progresses, then there will be a further vote next year on whether this council wants to adopt the local plan, and at that point, every single councillor will be accountable for their vote. To address the question directly, I'd been really clear previously, and I'll reiterate again, that I want to see a fairer site distribution across the city. I and my Labour colleagues wanted to see a lot more sites in the west and in the south-west of the city to be included in the plan, and we asked planning inspectors to look at a whole range of sites on the west and south-west. Some of those were not supported by planning officers, but to be really clear, others were not supported by groups within the council. Questions need to be asked of them about why they were not willing to back other sites, particularly, I would say, in the south-west of the city. If the draft plan is adopted in 2026, then it is my view that a new call for sites should take place soon after, and over the coming years, I want to make sure that the council works with landowners so that there is a fairer distribution of housing and employment sites right across the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Can I call again Gillian Travis for her question, please?
Okay, so thank you for your response to my previous question, Councillor Hunt. You say that lessons have been learned for the future, but this green belt consultation has happened under your leadership, and many residents never knew that this was taking place, and probably still don't know it's taking place, actually. Learning for next time doesn't help us now. Would you commit either to rerunning or extending this consultation with proper outreach, or do you accept responsibility for pushing through the consultation on a local plan that you now admit was inadequate?
Thank you very much. Councillor Hunt to respond?
Gillian, thanks very much for your question. As I've just mentioned, over three and a half thousand, 3,600 responses to the planned consultation were submitted, and there were some very well-attended consultation events during that six-week period, all of which reflects a higher level of public engagement with the consultation. I said in the last council meeting that I know that things could have been done better, and I stand by that. But look, what's happening now is that the examination hearings will start this month, and one of the things that they will do is to test the processes that have got us to this point in the plan process. That's the next phase, and it's right that all of the views of residents, those who think it's a good thing, those who have objections, those who criticise, those who provided further information, all of those views will now have a proper chance to be heard, and the examiners will hold meetings and hearings in public so that those arguments that residents have made and shared can be tested, so that is the right and proper process. There will then be a further consultation once planners have shared their views at the end of this next phase of hearings. They will share those views, we think, later in the autumn towards the end of this year, and a further consultation is likely to take place in early 2026, which means there'll be more chance for... there'll be more chance for members of the public to have their say. And as we've said all the way through this process, if sites are deemed to go forward, then there will be further consultation around master plans, and all through the planning process for sites, residents will have every opportunity to express their views and be heard, as is right in our democratic planning process. So thanks for coming today.
We got the responses because of the community groups, I'll just add that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gillian. Can I call again Jo Tunstall, asking a question on behalf of Alice Martin?
Yeah, it's another person that's volunteered to do your question.
Okay, thank you. Can you please state your name, please? Thank you.
Adele Riddle. You say in your response that you wish for there to be a fairer site distribution across the city and that you have included an additional site at Lodge Moor as part of the plan. However, the majority of the planned green belt development is in S thirty-five and S thirteen postcode districts. Can you explain how this represents a fair allocation of the sites across the city, particularly when other areas in the west and south-west appear to have been allocated far fewer or no building developments as part of the plan?
Thank you very much, Adele. Tom Hunt to respond, please.
Thank you, Adele, and thank you to Alice for the original question. I'll reiterate what I said, and I'll be really straight. I don't think that it does represent a fair distribution, and it's not just me who says that. In the S and R report and in the full council report that we all voted on back in May, it said very clearly, that, I quote, 'we recognise that this is not an even distribution of sites in all areas of the city'. But as I said in my previous answer to Mr Ritchie's question, I and my colleagues in my group pushed for more sites to be included in the south-west and west of the city. Some were not backed by planning officers, some were not backed by other groups in the council. And in the original question that came from Alice Marsden, she asked about the position of the Liberal Democrat group. Now, I'm not here to speak for the Liberal Democrat group, and I wouldn't want to. They need to provide their own justification for why they did not vote for any additional housing sites when the full council voted for this back in May, nor why they failed to back any additional sites in the south-west and west of the city. Like many people, I would like to know answers to that, but it's not for me to try to provide them. I would also like to know what their alternative sites are, and I hope that it's a question that can be put to colleagues on the other side of the chamber and the answers come forth. I know that members of the public would also like to receive them. They have consistently failed to do so, and it would be good to hear those answers. But look, I'll reiterate what I said, that it is my position and the position of the Labour group here that we do want to see more development in the south and in the south-west of the city. If the draft plan is adopted, it is my view that we should do a new call for sites, and we would work with landowners to see what we can do to bring forward sites so that there is a fairer distribution across the city.
Are we able to hear from those councillors? Thank you so much. Can I call Annie Ogara to the mic, please?
In the last council meeting, a Green councillor listed UK support for Israel's genocide, including exporting more arms to Israel since coming to power than the Tories did in the previous three years, refuelling Israeli jets, exporting parts for F thirty-five bombers, and deploying RAF flights on reconnaissance missions benefiting Israel. The leader said that he rejected in the strongest possible terms what his fellow councillor had said. My original question asked what was inaccurate in the points made. The leader has not answered, instead asserting that he himself does not support arms sales and military support being provided to the IDF. This wasn't the question. Councillors' personal opinions matter far less than their political policies and actions. The leader then hid behind David Lammy, the Secretary of State for Foreign and Commonwealth Affairs, citing a judgment of June twenty-twenty-five, which did not simply uphold the government's decision-making in arms sales, but actually said it is not for a domestic court to decide whether the decision of the executive on that issue is in accordance with international law. This Foreign Secretary is compromised. His own officials stated that Labour's ministers exhibit, quote, 'not just moral failure, but conduct that crosses the threshold into complicity with war crimes where armaments are concerned'. The question: are the leaders' slippery evasions of straight questions acceptable?
Thank you very much for your question. Councillor Hunt to respond?
Annie, thanks very much. Happy to provide answers. One of the downsides of the supplementary questions approach is that not everyone in the room here will be aware of the earlier part of our exchange, some of which you've shared. So look, for the benefit of everyone, let me say very clearly that the actions of the Israeli government in Gaza are intolerable and indefensible. I do not support arms sales from the UK to the Israeli government, nor do I want to see military support being provided to the IDF for the war in Gaza, which is what councillor Diamond referred to in the last full council meeting. On August the eleventh, I wrote to the Foreign Secretary and called for a full ban on arms sales to the Israeli government. The response that I received from the Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office sets out the UK government's position and actions on the matter. And I think in the spirit of sharing the information that was in my original answer, let me just read the relevant paragraph, which says, 'To recap, the UK government has stopped exports to the Israeli Defence Forces that might be used to commit or facilitate serious violations of international humanitarian law in Gaza. The UK government has successfully implemented the suspension decision and continues to refuse all relevant licence applications. It refused more licence applications for Israel in twenty-twenty-four than in twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three combined. The UK government has suspended direct exports of F thirty-five parts for use by Israel, and it categorically does not export any bombs or ammunition which could be used in Gaza and the West Bank. Furthermore, in an interview with the BBC on twenty-first of July, the Foreign Secretary outlined that RAF flights over Gaza, which we referred to previously, have not led to the sharing of any military intelligence with the IDF. My position on this is clear: I do not support arms sales or military support being provided to the Israeli government for the actions that they are taking in Gaza, which are intolerable and indefensible. That is what was referred to at the last full council meeting. I support the UK government's actions that I've just read out and the steps that they have taken. Thank you.
The Gaza tribunal, beginning tomorrow, will reveal that the councillor's original statements were absolutely accurate.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you. Can I call Deborah Coleman to the... to the mic? Deborah, are you here? I just wanted to apologize for behalf of the team that we didn't receive your questions beforehand. Is it Deborah? Is here, the mic is here on the side, yeah. Just careful with the stairs.
My supplementary question to Councillor Tom Hunt: can he honestly say that the destruction of Green Belt site, CHO3, that is full of wildlife and environmentally beautiful, will not have a detrimental impact on the amenity of this area, and that it will not cause unreasonable noise, dust, traffic, smells and fumes in an area that already has poor air quality? How will this plan protect residents living near the site when it will only have a negative impact on our health? Please, can you give me an answer as to why no consideration has been given to the residents overlooking out, sorry, at this monstrosity? Why are laws being ignored that are there to protect our environment? Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Tom Hunt, can you please respond?
Yes, thank you. Deborah, just to reiterate the Lord Mayor's apology, I don't know why, but I've only just got this question about half an hour ago, so I don't have a full answer specifically about the site, CHO3, which is Warren Lane, isn't it?
Yes.
So I'll make sure you get a full answer on that. But let me just say a few words, that what the examination will do is to test all of the arguments that you and many of the residents have rightfully submitted to the consultation. And genuinely, thank you for taking the time to come today, raising this point, but also submitting, as I'm sure you have done, your views to the consultation. That is exactly what is there to do, to make sure that the arguments that you've been putting forward can be properly tested to see if all the processes have been done correctly, and so the inspectors can make a well-reasoned judgement on all of the sites that have been proposed, taking into account the public feedback. So when those hearings start at the end of the month, it is exactly these kind of arguments that will be heard. It's super important that we listen to all of the views of residents and community groups and campaigners. So genuinely, thank you for submitting your consultation responses. The other thing I'd say is that if a site is deemed to go forward at this stage of the plan, then of course it then follows that the normal parts of our planning process would kick in subsequently. So if an application then went in for something to be built on a particular site, all of the normal considerations would be made about that, around traffic, around environmental impact of the kind that you mentioned. So there'd be lots more scrutiny of any development if a site is put forward. So there's many more stages in this process if sites are chosen to go forward, and everything, just to be really clear, will be done in full... fully in compliance with the law. Nothing will be done unlawfully here. So happy to make sure you get a full answer on CHO3 and the points you've raised today, and thanks for coming, and apologies that we didn't get a full frank answer today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. We have got two statements to be read out by Hillary Smith and Paul Wimpeny. Hillary, can you come to the mic? Thank you.
My statement refers to Agenda Item Nine, the motion on Palestine. Members of the Public Gallery, who are explicitly referred to in the motion, campaigns in Sheffield, do not have copies of the amendment to the motion. When I left home at twelve o'clock, the amendments were still not on the website, so I've not had a chance to see them, and neither has anybody sat here. We cannot observe or understand the debate that's going to happen at Agenda Item Nine if we don't have copies of those amendments. So I'm asking you, Lord Mayor, to make sure that that happens before we get to Agenda Item Nine.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Hillary. It's really a valid point, and also I can make sure that some copies are distributed right now while you're sat down. So apologies again.
my statement is Francesca Albanese, the United Nations Special Rapporteur, writes, and I quote, 'Israel is responsible for one of the cruelest genocides in modern history', unquote. I welcome today's motion on Palestine, but I deplore the fact that I see not a single point addressing what action this council will take regarding its own complicity with apartheid and genocide. The motion claims to be standing in solidarity with the communities and campaigning groups in Sheffield, some of whom are sat here in the chamber today. Yet this council has spent twenty-three months either rejecting or avoiding our calls for action. Each one of you on this council carries a moral responsibility to act in the face of genocide and the crime of apartheid. I remind you all that there is no legal bar to declaring Sheffield an apartheid-free zone, as the chief executive made clear at a Strategy and Resources Committee some months ago. And there is no legal bar to you writing to all Sheffield businesses and civic institutions, reminding them of their responsibility to prevent genocide and to renounce all ties which support Israeli apartheid. Francesca Albanese from the United Nations calls on all corporate entities, including councils, to, I quote, 'promptly cease all business activities and terminate relationships directly linked with contributing to and causing human rights violations and international crimes against the Palestinian people in accordance with the international corporate responsibilities and the law of self-determination'. Thank you.
Paul Wimpy, would you like to come to the mic, please?
Where Palestine is concerned, the sight of politicians simultaneously wringing their hands in concern and washing them, denying responsibility, is symptomatic of the moral and political paralysis gripping the West. The mantra appears to be, 'Make strong-sounding statements that require no action on our part'. Recently, the council leader called on the government to instigate a complete and immediate stop to all arms sales to Israel because of the clear risk the weapons will be used in violations of international humanitarian law, also urging sanctions on all who are credibly accused of committing or facilitating war crimes. On the surface, these are strong words. So what's the problem? Well, Sheffield is a cog in the arms industry machine. The council puts money into the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority and banks with Barclays, both investors in armaments enabling those war crimes. It's easy to call on others nationally to act, but this must be backed up locally in Sheffield, where we live. Tell Barclays you will close your account as soon as possible. Tell the South Yorkshire Pension Authority that you oppose its investments in arms. Declare your opposition to local involvement in the arms trade, denouncing businesses that profit from the economy of genocide, or face the charge of gesture politics and hypocrisy.
Thank you very much, Paul. That was a moving statement. Now we shall move to item number six, members' question. There is a maximum time limit of thirty minutes of the whole item of business.
Lady Mayor, I have a question to be asked from my entire report. My name is Adele. I'm a farmer that you want to put out for a home and a business in Sheffield.
I do apologize, it is not on my list, but just give me a second. David Hollis will address you and your question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I think you've put a question in that's been answered in writing in advance, and that that's the normal procedure, and that you didn't indicate that you wanted to ask a supplementary question. a supplementary question, and therefore that's why it doesn't appear on the list today. So you've, you've had the answer in writing before the meeting today.
That, that is absolutely fine, and that is absolutely, you're right. What he's trying to say is that you haven't indicated you wanted a supplementary question.
I was busy working on the farm.
I under-
They emailed at nine o'clock one morning, I've been on a truck to see things fly, I didn't get chance to-
I, I understand, but what I'm, what I'm trying to address, and I'm not going to absolutely take that passion away, what I'm trying to address is just a reply of the question that you've asked, why was I not on the list? This is why you weren't on the list, and that, that's right. So you can ask the question, I will allow you to ask the supplementary question, but the rules were for you to ask the question, they, they written to you, then you've got to indicate. And I understand you are, you're working at that time and there's not much of a timeline, but this is the answer.
I'm sorry, I didn't realise that.
That's absolutely fine, but the thing is, is that, you know, you can ask, it can, you can even ask the question now, and I can allow it, but although I, I shouldn't, but I can allow it, but it's, I just want you to get a fair answer, does that make sense? A prepared answer as well.
Well, I'd like to read it out.
I, I'm going to allow it, I'm going to allow it. Come to read it out.
Well firstly, I'd like to say that you councillors down there are there to represent us up here, and this is what you freely try to forget about. You've tried to take, wanting to take me farm and me livelihood, me home and me business. You wanted to build on good greenbelt land when time again it's turned down three brownfield sites, the one at Chapel Town Yorkshire Bank, the one at the Ski Village, and 25 flats, 25 flats in Fullwood. These sites ought to be used rather than building on good farmland that produces your food. Not only that, why is there so many houses? One council house, 46 Church Street, Eddersfield, a council house being empty 10 years. You've had no rent, no council tax. You're supposed to be a Green Party. You're there on internet saying, "Oh, we're desperate for housing." There's hundreds like this boarded up. It's time you got your housing stock in order and people living in them houses. 10 years and then you've sold it. It's time you got back to basics, get the housing stock in order, instead of sprinkling away money on damn car-
Adele?
-on these Dutch roundabouts.
Adele, just, just a quick question. The question that you're reading right now, plus including the statements that you've got together, is already being submitted. So is there a question in this statement you're, I just need a question. Don't forget, you're leading me blind, so I can't see anything that you're reading. So where's the question?
Well, I'd like to know if the 3,000 homes that you've got planning permission inherently, are they in the local plan?
Thank you. Councillor Hunt, if you could write a, respond to Adele, please. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Lord Mayor, can I-
Yeah. Adele, Councillor Hunt would respond now.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Adele, there is, as the Lord Mayor says, a detailed answer which refers to all of the sites that you've just mentioned, specifically on the, on the Attic Cliff question. And yes, some of those sites are included in the local plan, more will come forward in what's called the windfall category, which is other sites that aren't yet allocated, but where we think housing is likely to come forward. I know we're in touch with Marie Timble's office, and there's a conversation taking place about having a further detailed conversation with yourself, so keen to have that, and then we'll be able to carry on this conversation.
Adele, Adele, I can't allow arguments. I understand you're passionate about it, and I am on your side, and I did-
I'm one of those real people who you're all in your business, I'm one of those four people who are everywhere, it's a nightmare, I'm a council man, I'm a poor man, Adele. Allow the Green Party to stick there, my advantage is my property.
Yeah.
It's absolutely shit.
Adele?
Against everything, the Green Party's door.
She's really upset.
Build, talk to the new ones, bring them round. I don't know your sleep at night.
Okay. I'm gonna ask them, I'm gonna ask to refrain from shouting, okay? And it's, it's quite, and I understand your anger, I'll, I'll change passion to anger. I understand your anger, and I can't live, I, no, I don't have a home to lose, and I don't have, and absolutely, and you're right, you are providing me with food. One second.
For offering the thousands of baskets to a-
I understand.
For our children and their children.
One second.
For our future.
Okay.
For the concrete-
Adele, Adele.
For you to come and have a look, I'm calling you. I was expecting the Green Party, everybody, anyone of you who come and have a cup of tea on a walk round farm.
Adele? Can we stop this?
You're relying me, and you're all thinking, depending on it.
I completely address your anger, and I understand what you're saying. And like you said, and I think everybody in this room heard you the way it is.
Well, it's just, it's just been my-
Well, we've got a procedure now, we've got a procedure. Adele, I'm trying to be as compassionate and fair as I can. I can't have you shouting across there.
Well, I'm not right to go.
Don't think you need, but yeah. Thank you, Adele, thank you for your question. Moving to item number six, members of questions. There is a maximum time of limited of 30 minutes of this whole item of business. Item 6.1 is questions on urgent businesses. There are no questions on urgent businesses. Item 6.2, supplementary questions, written answers to questions submitted by members of advance of the meeting have been emailed to all members, circulated at the meetings and published at the shepherds, at the council website. These questions were to the leader of the council or the policy committee and subcommittee of regulated, regulatory committee chairs, or to members appointed by the council to serve on the South Yorkshire Joint Authority, the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority and/or any other external bodies or just a committee. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who had submitted questions to ask one supplementary questions for each, for questions asked. Please can I ask that members do not make statements or speeches, but instead be short and to the point when asking their supplementary questions or responding to questions. This is to ensure that as many members of, as possible, to get the opportunity to ask supplementary questions. Item number six, if we can follow. Question, question, page one, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thanks for the response on question one, Tom. I did identify, well, it was identified by the council, that there was something like 47 hectares of employment land available within the city. The, the response is quite lengthy, but it finishes with that the updated Integrated Impact Assessment concludes that the targeted release of greenbelt sites to provide additional land for employment purposes will lead to major positive economic impacts. Does that mean then that greenbelt will be considered before brownfield in this plan as a result of this statement? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hunt, to respond?
No, I think as a member of the cross-party, Member Working Group on the local plan, you're probably better briefed on this than, than I am, but you, you'll know that that's not the case.
Page, no, one supplementary question.
Question?
Yeah, page two. You have to wait till I finish the page numbers. That's why you're confusing me. I know. Page three, go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In terms of housing land and the non-return and look at what possibilities there could be, the inspectors after stage one hearings in April 2024 did ask for a list of small sites for consideration in terms of meeting the target number. Now, what was done in Integrated Impact Assessment was looking at 24 sites or clusters of sites across the city, which had to have a minimum of 500 houses on them. And of those 13, 13 other sites which were given the green light to go, would potentially build up to 17,600 homes in greenbelt. So why is it that instead of putting together a plan for small sites, large scale development proposals were put together in a greenbelt under the, under the Impact Assessment Plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hunt, to respond?
Look, I'll, I'll make sure that you get a detailed answer on that, but as I say, I, I know that yourself, you've been a part of that Member Working Group, been part of shaping how the council's response to the inspectors' work has-
Councillor Hunt, can I just, can we have less noise over there, please? We can't. Thank you. Councillor Hunt, carry on, please.
I think a lot of the smaller sites will come forward in the very generous windfall allowance that the inspectors have granted the council. But as I say, look, I'll get you a full detailed response on that, but I'm sure that this has been a matter that will have been discussed at the Member Working Group, but I'll make sure you get the information.
Page three again, Alexi.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Councillor Hunt, for your response. You've attempted to refute some of the things, the ways in which the Labour Government is supporting the Israeli government and the IDF, but you haven't refuted all of the, all of the ways. Do you therefore accept, and can you answer yes or no, that the Labour Government is supporting Israel, the Israeli government and the IDF?
Thank you. Councillor Hunt?
Yeah. Councillor Diamond, thank you. I mean, i- in a way, your, your question is very similar to the one that Annie O'Gara asked me earlier on from the Public Gallery, so I won't reiterate that. I do think though, that I think a lot of the questions that you're asking, they're really questions for the government to answer, and I would encourage all members of this chamber to, to write to their MP, to raise these very valid concerns. There are four Green Party MPs, maybe you should direct your questions to them to raise them in the House. But look, I'll set out my view very, very clearly, it is the view of the Labour Group. I wrote to the Foreign Secretary on this la- last month, arms should not be sold to the Israeli government, nor military support provided for the IDF for their war in Gaza. I do understand the concerns you've raised, but I do still question the claims that you've suggested. So do write to your MP.
Thank you. Page four, Councillor Diamond again.
Thank you very much. So you've said that international law should always be upheld, and you say you stand by this statement. Would you support David Lammy and Keir Starmer appearing before a war crimes, war crimes tribunal?
Councillor Hunt?
I really think that, you know, this is not what we're here to discuss today. You can, you can ask your questions, but really, these are matters for the government to, for Parliament to consider. International law should always be upheld. Do I stand by that statement? Yes.
Page five. Page six. Councillor Murray?
Thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord Mayor. Can you outline specific steps or timelines for strengthening the specific ties with NABULUS and implementing an ethical procurement policy? How will you ensure these actions have measurable impacts?
Thank you. Councillor Hunt?
Can we just clarify which question that was about?
Apologies, question three on page six, answer three on page six.
I mean, what I would say is that the ethical procurement policy that I referenced there, I'll, I'll jump ahead to my answer to question four, which you're welcome to come to if you want, but just this week, I think you'll all join me in being pleased to see that the consultation around the new ethical procurement policy is now underway, and I think the work of the Finance and Performance Committee and the members that have been part of the work there to get that into good shape, I would encourage you and many others, many of your residents, to submit their views to that. And then once that's in, the, the link there is in the bottom of question four. Once that's in place, it will be possible to measure the procurement, because that will be a matter of public record in terms of the public contracts that the council signs. So hopefully that answers your question, but please do, this is a big step forward. I've been asked questions on many occasions, as has the Chair of the Finance and Performance Committee, and I really do thank councillor Nas for the work that she and others have been doing to make sure that we've got a really robust draft policy that's out for consultation right now. Please do submit your views, and let's make sure that when that comes back quickly to the October meeting of the Finance and Performance Committee, it's enhanced and informed by the views of the people of the city, and I would encourage you to submit in your own response to councillor Ruff.
Thank you. Question six again?
Answer four now, question four. I, I will be very pleased to join you in saying congratulations on getting this ethical procurement policy out of consultation. However, why did it take nearly six months after the petition for the consultation to begin, and what lessons has the council learnt to avoid such delays in the future?
Councillor Hunt?
It was, there's been a cross-party Member Working Group which has agreed the timeline, and I think, I think I'm right in saying that the consultation was originally due to start earlier in the summer, but all members across party of that working group agreed that it was right to take a bit more time to get that into the best possible shape before it goes out for consultation. So I know that there were members of your group who were part of that decision-making process, so we all have taken a collective decision to ensure that what goes out for consultation is in the best possible shape, and it's a responsibility of all of us who sit on committees to ensure that when things are referred from full council, they move quickly from this chamber onto the work programmes of committees and then on to agendas. Every single committee meeting, we all sit there, we all look at the work programme, and it's right that if you see something on there that you think should be put on an agenda sooner, then that is your opportunity, every single public committee meeting, to raise your voice and ask, what's the progress on this? And I'm sure that the Chair of every single committee would be more than happy to facilitate any requests from you or members from across this chamber to ask questions about why is it taking a certain amount of time for any item? So please do use your right as a member of this council to ensure that we move through our business quickly and efficiently and in line with our values. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Page seven.
Lord Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. I know that in Walkley Ward, there have been over 20 water leaks over the last year, and one of the issues that residents persistently raise is that once the leak has been fixed, that Yorkshire water are then slow to backfill the hole, meaning that roads remain closed, closed for much longer than is absolutely necessary. And I just wondered if there's anything that you thought you could do to help this situation? Thank you.
Councillor Hunt?
Yeah, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor McLean, for your-
One second, one second. You know, it's very disturbing and very dispec, when there's side conversations, there's a public ear, we've got one speaker and one speaker alone, with the noise as well, it's very hard to hear. So if we can all just concentrate with one speaker, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Look, let me just say before I address the specific question, it is absolutely unacceptable that the Chief Executive of Yorkshire Water received two additional undisclosed payments of over 650,000 each, on top of her annual pay of 689,000. That comes at a time when Yorkshire Water customers are facing a 41% increase in bills, sewage is pouring into our rivers, and more and more of us having to put up with pipes bursting and delays on our roads. And in Walkley Ward alone, I know councillor McLean and myself have identified over 20 different leaks over the last couple of years. And what the residents get so frustrated about is when they see Yorkshire Water coming out, often doing the very quick, immediate bit of work to stop the water pouring out out, often doing the very quick, immediate bit of work to stop the water pouring out the broken pipe, but then they leave the hole in the road for up to a week afterwards and fail to get it backfilled and the road surface restored quickly. I've put that question directly to the chief executive of Yorkshire Water, who has admitted they do not have enough subcontractors on their books to be able to do this work. It's not good enough, and my message when I meet with both her and the Chair of the Yorkshire Water's board will be sort this out because residents are fed up with your poor service, they're fed up with sewage pouring into our rivers, and they are fed up with the fact that you are getting extremely high salaries every single year. This looks and smells like you're being rewarded for failure.
Thank you. Page number eight. Page number nine. councillor Brooke?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Hunt for your well-rehearsed answer to my question about the development in Walkleideside.
Just a question, that's okay, no statements.
Well, the question is, uh, do you believe that our Greenham Pleasant land should be up for sale?
Thank you. councillor Hunt to reply.
Thank you very much, Mr Booker. Um, it, I, I believe that this council has got a plan, which means that over the next 15 years, if the local plan progresses, over 89% of the homes will be built on brownfield sites. That is exactly right, and we want to be making sure that, um, brownfield sites are where the majority of homes are. We put forward a local plan earlier, uh, last year, which was, did not include any green belt sites apart from one at Norton Aerodrome. We were put in this position by the planning inspectors, and this, as I've already said today, is now a critical moment in the plan process, where all of the arguments for those sites, all of the views of residents, and I hope that you did submit your own views to the planning inspectors, I'm sure your constituents would expect that to have happened, they will all be tested in public at those hearings so that the inspectors can then make well-reasoned judgements on all of those sites. So that's the appropriate way forward, um, and I hope that, you know, you did submit those views because, um, it's important that all of us take up that democratic right.
Thank you. Page 10. councillor Ruff?
Uh, question one. I recognise your answer to my question, so let's focus on what can be done. While you say the council may not have jurisdiction over arms exports, what steps will you support locally, such as through procurement policies, investment decisions or public advocacy, to ensure the council's values on peace and human rights are reflected in real, real world practices?
Thank you. councillor Maru?
Uh, thank you for your question, councillor Ruff. May I begin by saying that what's happening in Gaza is absolutely appalling, but I don't want to preempt the debate which is going to be taking place shortly. In, in terms of what I've given you as the answer, and I think you've asked this question previously as well, is that we, as a local authority, do not have any jurisdiction on where the private sector actually develops. What I would suggest is the sense, that national government does have that power, and I'm sure you've already done this, uh, you have actually written to national government and expressed your, uh, views on that particular subject. Uh, I'm assuming that you've done that. In terms of your follow-up question, which was, uh, in terms of an ethical procurement policy, I think that question has already been answered today, that we have got a working group that's working on that, and it will be coming forward to which you obviously will make a contribution to. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Page 14. councillor Maru?
Um, thank you, Lord Mayor. Question eight. How will you ensure that areas which previously lacked the infrastructure to bid for ERF funding are supported to build that capacity, and what alternative funding streams will be made available for them?
Thank you.
Thank you again for that question, councillor Ruff, and I'm, I'm very pleased you're actually asking that question because that is one of the first things that I looked at when I took this portfolio on. And what I've done so far is, I have actually been to London Road and with the officers, and we visited a number of traders there. Unfortunately, the day we actually picked was the wrong day, uh, because a, a lot of them were actually not open at lunchtime on a Friday. So what we've done is we're having a follow-up, uh, I, I think later on in September, when we'll be going and visiting those people again. Because what the Economic Recovery Fund did do is created a stimulus amongst the community of traders, that something should be happening in their areas. And what I'm doing as a follow-up to that, apart from visiting London Road, I will also be, I've also visited Woodseats. I am going to be visiting Division Street, uh, later this week on Friday with officers, and following that, we'll be going to, uh, Burn Green, and I intend to do this, uh, throughout, uh, the area. What I would say to you is that small businesses are definitely struggling, retail is definitely struggling as we speak. So intervention, whatever intervention that we can give will be, uh, will be something that will help them sustain themselves moving into the future. Uh, so hopefully you will also contribute to, uh, my visit on London Road as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Page 14 again. councillor Ruff?
Question nine, thank you. You say 360, you say 360 pennies have been generated for every pound spent. However, are you able to advise how in Nether Edge and Sharrow, a mural that is very rarely seen and a few flags on a lamppost is leading to more of those pennies being generated?
Um, thank you. Sorry, I didn't switch it off before I might as a state stood up for that one. The question is around, uh, how have you activated which types of interventions? Is that the one that you're referring to there?
Uh, it was question nine, and specifically how you, um, identify those pennies being generated from a, a few flags on a lamppost.
I think this was done externally by, uh, CADA, and the report that, uh, CADA have provided is actually, uh, there's a link to that, and that will give you the answer to that question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Page 14. Page 15. councillor Ruff?
Thank you.
You're on fire today. You're doing well.
Oh, thank you. Um, uh, sorry, yeah, question 10. You say the council has not excluded any London Road businesses from engaging with the project. However, are you able to explain to me then who excluded those businesses, as some were not even aware of the London Road ERF project?
Thank you for your question again, and I'm glad you've, uh, asked that question again, to be honest. Um, we have actually reached out. I can only answer for particularly where I'm involved in this. As soon as I was made aware that there was issues, and, and, and I think other members may not be aware of this, there were issues around who had been contacted, who had not been contacted, and I think there's an outstanding question for you to, uh, to officers, which will be answered in due course as well. Uh, what I, what we did was the first visit, we, we, we wrote to almost all the traders there and asked them to, uh, meet us and to tell us where the difficulties were. And I'm doing that again on the 25th, as I've explained in my previous answer, and the reason for that is to reach out to those traders who have not been, uh, who, who felt they've not been, uh, consulted on what's been happening at London Road. But one good thing about London Road is, and if, to, to answer your question even further, we have, we're having a huge amount of organic growth within, uh, London Road. I mean, I spent Friday evening on London Road, and the stuff that's happening around London Road is not as a result directly of the, uh, Economic, uh, Recovery Fund stuff, it's because there are franchises and South Asian franchises which are actually coming to London Road, uh, from places like Manchester, Bradford, Birmingham, et cetera. So the culture that's been developed on London Road is something that I want to enhance as we move forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Page 15. Page 16. Go ahead, Maru.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Uh, thank you, councillor Maru, for recognising how amazing London Road is, and everybody in this city should recognise that too. However, I just wanted some clarity on your answer to question 13. Um, will the flimsy flags hanging on for their dear lives on lampposts along one half of London Road that say 'We love London Road' be in place for the next 25 years?
Switch myself off now. I should, should just keep standing, and we just, we'll have a conversation between us on this one, I think. Uh, but the, the, the answer to that question is yes, we, the, the answer that's given to you is what is intended, but I recognise the fact that these are fr- flags would not last 25 years, so I accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, and you'll be glad to know this is my final question on this matter. In question 14, in hindsight, given your answer, do you believe it was a mistake to not independently evaluate each project to see what lessons could have been learnt around deliverables and how each project was managed?
Uh, very good question again. Um, and I think the, the answer lies in the CADA report, but in, in answering your question directly, yeah, there were some that were very successful, others were not successful, and if you read the CADA report, which it clearly states, that working from bot- from the bottom upwards was the way that we, this thing should have been done. So we have actually learnt lessons, and we'll continue to learn lessons as we move forward. So I'm not going to stand here and say it was absolutely perfect, because we are learning lessons, and this had never been done before. But what I have actually learnt from that report and what I'm intending to do, uh, uh, moving forward, is to work with small businesses, is to work with the district centres, and is to work with retailers who feel as though they need support, and the support they need from the council, and I'm sure you will support that as well. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Page 16. Page 17. Page 18. Page 19. Page 20. 21. 22. councillor Atkinson, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so this is, um, a question regarding the closure of Mount St Mary's College.
What's the number of the question? Sorry?
Question three, sorry. Um, how many of the affected pupils, um, have an identified need for semper vision, um, and have these pupils, um, found or been offered a place in a school in Sheffield that meets their needs?
councillor Dale?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Uh, because that wasn't a specific question, uh, in your submitted questions, I don't know that today, but I can get that to me right. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 22 again. Page 23. councillor Atkinson, go ahead.
Um, this is question five. Um, thank you for the response. Um, so, uh, so following on from this, um, would you be happy to organise, um, a formal feedback gathering exercise, um, around the council's response to the crisis for the families, um, and carers of the pupils affected, um, and use these responses to prepare for any further school closures that may occur? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Adele?
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. As you will know from the answer, that the information that I, sorry, I've got this wrong. Thank you, uh, Lord Mayor. I would be happy to discuss this with many parents that have been impacted by this, but what I must reiterate is that the responsibility sits with the independent schools that have closed in order for them to be, to give us the information as well. So throughout this process, what we have found is there've been a couple of schools that have closed over the summer, and we've had to liaise, in this case, with Derbyshire Council and the school outside of area. But yeah, I'd be happy to have those conversations with parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 23. 24. 25. councillor Ruff?
Thank you.
Leave him alone, he's here to do a job. Go ahead.
Question two. This is question two. Um, given, given the answer given, and, uh, given what's written in the answer, that the council is very rarely going to prosecute, and the police have much better things to do, uh, such as catching drug dealers, for example, uh, is it, is it right to suggest that the public have free use to use any pavement and park on there as much as they want?
Thank you. councillor Otten?
Thank you for your, your, your question. Yeah, look, so the police have better powers, more efficient powers to deal this, deal with this than we do, and, but as you say, obviously they have priorities. I've got to say, in terms of our capacity to make prosecutions, we have more urgent, typically we have more urgent things to prosecute. We prosecute, um, shops selling tobacco to children, for example, that's, that's really important. We prosecute serious cases of flight something. I would rather that our resources within the service for prosecutions were spent on those cases, um, over, over pavement parking, except in the most serious cases, because the, almost all the time, they will be great priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Page 25. 26. 27. Oh, 26?
27.
27.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question one. Um, councillor Nas, with this information in front of us with over 1,400 empty homes in Sheffield, so why did you and your Labour colleagues vote to build on that poor lady's farm in the green belt when we have over 1,400 homes laying empty? Because as councillor Hunt has said, there is, there was a local plan that we'd agreed on that protected the green belt, but the Labour government came back and said that's not good enough. Now, we, if people want in the Liberal Democrat position on this, as councillor Hunt alluded to earlier, it's that we want these empty homes brought back into youth, and we want brownfield land regenerated. We don't answer to a government that can throw darts at a map and stay built, we answer to the people of Sheffield. So councillor Nas, with this information in front of us, is it your view that the local plan is proportionate?
Thank you. councillor Nas?
Thank you for your question. Um, the Finance and Performance Committee monitor long-term empty premium in terms of finances. Maybe your question can be answered by councillor Johnson, because it is a housing committee that are responsible for overseeing the performance and delivering of housing-related services.
I would happily hear from Green councillor Johnson on this, if he'd like to answer.
That's not a supplementary question. Page two. Adele, me and you are not going to be friends today. Adele, please don't shout out of the balcony. Please. Page 28. 29. 30. 31. 32. 33. councillor Edrake?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you Douglas for your answer. Uh, once yet, do you have an idea of how many houses in, I guess crooks in particular, um, that are snugly credited have, well, what proportion of private rented houses in crooks are snugly credited? How many of those have had inspections? And will, will your committee investigate the feasibility of a landlord licensing scheme? I don't expect you to have this answer now, happy to have them by your mill.
Thank you. councillor Johnson?
Ooh, a bit spooky there. Um, yes, you're asking about the number of houses being inspected in crooks. I'm sure we, the officers could tell us. Um, would you drop me an email, and then I'll be able to follow that up?
Thank you. As this time limited for members' question has been reached, I shall now move on to the next item, but before that, can we have a comfort break? 15 minutes? You're pushing it if you go to 20.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Great time.
There is a maximum time limited of 25 minutes for this item. May I call councillor Robert Rice to move the motion? You may speak up to three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Lord Mayor. Is music the food of love? Play on. Um, music is woven into what it is to be human. Every culture has its own musical tradition, across every age, from singing lullabies to our babies, to throwing sweaty jigs on dirty dance floors, to the quiet appreciation of Beethoven. Sheffield has a proud musical heritage, from the singing of historic Christmas carols up in the Black Bull in Ecclesfield, right through to, uh, the Arctic Monkeys in the lead mill, and to hosting the Mobos a few years ago. Music has been a golden thread through the fabric of our city. And music and nightlife bring people together. It allows us to share culture and spark joy. Events, large and small, from tram lines to the nights at the Dorothy Pax, drive our economy and provide jobs for tens of thousands of people in the entertainment and hospitality industries. But this sector is under threat. With gra- grassroots venues operating at an average profit margin of 0.5%, how can they survive spiralling costs? And especially when rate rates are wax on, higher, uh, enix and business rates, uh, it doesn't look good. No wonder a quarter of nightlife, uh, night, uh, late-night venues have closed since March 2020, according to figures from the Nighttime Industries Association. This is why we're calling for a citywide night This is why we're calling for a citywide nightlife advisory group, a cross-organisational body to advise to but also advocate for our venues with one clear voice. Getting around at night isn't easy. Sheffield has the second worst public transport connectivity of any of the UK's core cities when it comes to the night time. If buses stop early, people drive, they spend less, they leave the venues earlier or they just don't go out in the first place. So, and I'll look at the camera, where's the camera? It's up there. Oliver, if you care about our economy, talk to the bus companies, get them to run night buses. Because we need to make sure that people can get around the city at all times of day. And all of this must happen where people feel safe. We welcome the work on the anti-spiking Sheffield Safe Square, but more is needed. It's a white ribbon, a credit council, we should revisit the Women's Safety Charter so venues know their responsibilities and women's know which venues have their safety at heart. Because that is what we Liberal Democrats want, a city where talent is nurtured, where every culture is celebrated, and a city where people can come together, let their hair down and simply have a damn good time. Thank you.
And before the red, you're going to be my favourite councillor Rice today. May I call councillor Barbara Masters to second the motion? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The opposition party's self-congratulatory amendments show they failed to grasp the depth of crisis the hospitality industry is in. The figures are stark. Late-night venues and independent pubs are closing. It means a loss of job opportunities, especially entry routes into employment for the less qualified. It means the loss of safe and regulated social spaces, allowing people from various walks of life to meet and mingle. This is much more than helping an industry which has been strangled by recent government legislation and an unfair tax regime which makes it so much cheaper for people to buy alcohol in supermarkets and off-licenses. Hospitality venues also provide spaces which incubate emerging musical talents in the range of genres that Sheffield is famous for. They nurture skills that the wider Sheffield industry need, software development, marketing skills, set designs, electronics, to name just a few. These venues provide opportunities for young people to meet over shared interests and to develop their skills and talents which can lead to a rewarding career. We know that ability is independent of the life circumstances someone was born into, but the opportunities to develop them are not. These spaces are vital for those from less privileged backgrounds. The existing regulations penalise our late-night operators and small independent pubs unfairly while encouraging the proliferation of off-licensed premises and drinking in unregulated areas, whether the home or the street. The government must modernise the outdated regulatory frameworks, but we can do something here in Sheffield. If we're to have a rich and varied musical future as well as a past, we need to look at how our regulations in planning environmental protection, licensing, health and safety affect the hospitality industry and how the plans to build more homes across the city centre and further afield will affect them. It's why we encourage colleagues to support our motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you so much. There are two proposed amendments, and these are number one and number two on the list of the amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call councillor Moynham to move amendment one? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I do welcome much of what's proposed in the motion. We should all welcome high-profile events like tram lines, and there's been so much this summer showcasing incredible homegrown musical talent in Sheffield, and we've still got further events celebrating local talent such as Castle Gate Festival and No Bounds, providing cultural and leisure experiences to those from our city and beyond, and showcasing all that our wonderful city has to offer, and also bringing valuable economic benefits to the city. Of course, talent is everywhere, but we also know that opportunity is not. Not all communities benefit from these events, and that's why Labour support the plethora of initiatives to work at a grassroots level and seek to engage with those communities. Organisations such as Sheffield Music Hub, Tracks, et cetera, et cetera. They are crucial in developing talent and providing opportunities to people, and particularly young people, who would not otherwise be able to perform and grow. The Labour government has a mission to halve violence against women and girls, and we're working to that aim through the Safer Sheffield partnership. I'd like to remind councillors that in 2025 Sheffield was accredited with a Purple Flag Award for the way it manages the night time economy. In relation to transport, the Tory and the Lib Dem coalition made significant cuts to transport in the north. This Labour mayor, and you mentioned Oliver Copard, working with the Labour leaders in South Yorkshire is bringing the buses into public control. We are committed to giving people the opportunity to influence where they want to go and when they want to go.
Thank you. May I call on councillor Iviola to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Sheffield's night time economy is vital. It creates jobs, supports businesses and keeps our city vibrant. But growth must go in hand in hand with safety. That's why I support our amendment, asking the ERAs to consider adding an update on the Women's Safety Charter to its work programme and to explore what more can be done to keep our city safe at night, for women, for girls and for everyone enjoying the night time economy and working at venues. The Purple Flag, as my colleague Laura Bonahan mentioned, awarded for our city centre for the thirteenth year in a row, shows we are getting many things right. Lord Mayor, I also welcome the recognition of our world-class musicians, festivals and venues. They don't just only contribute millions to our economy, music brings people together and lifts our wellbeing. But as councillor Bonahan mentioned, the truth is, talent is everywhere, but opportunity is not. That's why our amendment highlights the vital work of music educators and organisations in our cities like South Yorkshire Music Hub, Sheffield Music School and others who give people from diverse backgrounds the chance to perform, to grow and to shine. I also want to congratulate Harmony Works Trust for raising most of their funding for the remarkable project, which was from Arts Council England, the Heritage Lottery Fund, the Galway Western Foundation and of course Sheffield City Council. Finally, I welcome the cross-party support for Event Central and look forward to construction beginning soon. And as the Deputy Chair of Economic Development Skills and Culture Policy Committee, I also support creating a citywide night time advisory group to give a strong voice to hospitality, licence and music venues across Sheffield. But, Lord Mayor, Sheffield shines brightest when it is safe, when it is inclusive and alive with culture, and that is a future we must build together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I call councillor Douglas Johnson to move amendment number two? You may speak up to two minutes, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, I welcome the cross-party expressions of support for the music and performance industries and the whole night time industry we have here, as well as the range of small and independent businesses that we have in the city. And the question is whether this translates into reality, because that support hasn't always been there. We know now that a lot of these small independent businesses are really under the cosh, as we mentioned about massive increases in national insurance and business rates that particularly hurt some businesses this year. And of course, the Dorothy Pats, as mentioned, that's a fantastic music venue that's now closed in this context. I'm really pleased, some of the work I've been doing in Kellam Island has been supporting the businesses getting together there. There's 32 bars, night time hospitality businesses that formed a new business group under the umbrella of Love Kellam, and it's about cooperation and collaboration, collective buying, and some really good principles there, as businesses are really doing what they can, knowing the community and doing their best to pull up the area. But a lot of the suggestions in this motion have already been underway, and this highlights just how much work is going on amongst businesses and amongst lots of people, both in this room and throughout the council, throughout businesses and other agencies around the city. Safe Square, it's had lots of funding, even if it comes in dribs and drabs, and the city ward councils have been involved, a lot of discussions about that. Savings of, an estimate of nine pounds 31 saved in A and E costs for every pound that goes into it. It's really good. Youth savings, the ambulance service too, estimated at one counter at 3,600 a month. There is already a night time advisory group, Unite, it's led by businesses who know about the night time community. And then, of course, there is already the Sheffield Women and Girls Night Time Safety Charter. It may need more resources behind it, but it's already there and a lot of businesses are implementing what's in there.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you. May I call councillor Home Show to second the amendment, please? You've got up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's a lot to commend in this motion and in the amendments to the motion. Many initiatives are mentioned, from Harmony Works to Safe Square. One that we failed to include and I've just noticed is the Street Pastors, who provide counselling skills, drugs and alcohol awareness and street safety support in the city centre each weekend, each and every weekend. I attend the fringe of tram lines every year. It's much more affordable than the main event, to be honest, and contributes substantially to the Sheffield economy. It's the grassroots organisations and venues, folk, rock, jazz, orchestral music, they all contribute to the way we enjoy the place we live, and I enjoy that aspect of it. However, the night time economy is more than just the music scene. It needs infrastructure for it to work. I've mentioned the Street Pastors already and the contribution they make, and that needs funding. Community interest companies like Love Kellam and the Traders' Association at Hillsborough play an important part in making our city and its suburbs attractive to visit, to enjoy throughout the day and the evening. And we need to look after the people who work in the industry and the people who come along to take part. In celebrating hospitality, we need to remember that while some hospitality jobs are rewarding and fulfilling and fitting round other work and family care needs, others are crushingly boring and not fulfilling, with poor pay and with long hours. Taxis, for example, are not always provided to get workers home safely at night. All companies should be doing this, and we should be getting night buses to fill those gaps. It's important that community centres are supported too. They have a role to play in our city centre and throughout our neighbourhoods to host evening and daytime meetings. They're also part of the night time economy. And it's about time we had a citywide fund to help support these and deal with funding applications for organisations that cover the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, councillor Home Show. We're going to move to debate, but before that, can I remind everybody that came back from the break to make sure that they've logged in already? So make sure that you've actually logged in. Thank you. Move to debate, can I call councillor Iris to the mic? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words about the successful Woodseats Live in My Wood and the importance of the local to the music industry ecosystem. Now, Woodseats Live is a 100% free entry, multi-venue festival of spoken word, comedy, dance and music that happens in March in Woodseats, created in 2023 by the brainchild of two local musicians when grassroots venues were struggling after the pandemic, engaging several local business sponsors in an attempt to tap into the potential of the pocket community to renew the high street in Woodseats. And it formed part of the This Is Woodseats Economic Recovery Fund Round Two bid. Projects like Woodseats Live are more accessible for everybody, where the larger festival format of today's tram lines perhaps falls short. Woodseats Live's venues are familiar, local pubs and micro pubs, so-called grassroots venue pubs in and around Woodseats, places where smaller bands can cut their teeth while music fans won't be paying over the odds to see them play. Grassroots venue pubs are spaces which are also contributing to the cultural offer of live music in our towns and cities, but which may lack the full facilities of a grassroots music venue. Sadly, the wider ARF bid for 200K was unsuccessful, and although Grace Park Ward found 25K from our wood pot to support the overall This Is Woodseats project, we did that to enable to continue. They say the festival's been freed from antisocial behaviour and littering. That's where a citywide night time advisory group could perhaps play a role for local partnerships, developing cohesive strategies involving grassroots venues. These spaces are important for the talent pipeline, they help musicians upskill, provide jobs.
Thank you, councillor Iris. I'm going to have to stop here.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So councillor Bannister, if you'd like to come to the mic?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sheffield has a long and proud history of sporting new and innovative music, Stuart Slough, from the early electronica of the Human League to the dance and ambient releases reward records to stay where we still have a thriving punk and hardcore scene, sport by small venues such as Love Hole and Delicious Clans. Venues run on a DIY basis for passion, not profit. We all know how hard it is to run a leisure and entertainment venue in the current climate, and people just don't have disposable income, just go out and simply enjoy themselves. While we are broadly in support of the motion put by my Lib Dem colleagues, I do have to take exception to blaming the recent changes in national insurance. As you might know, outside this chamber, I run a leisure business, and we've experienced tough times, and we have struggles, however, increasing wages isn't the main one this year. Off the back of the financial vandalism, trust and quarto important, my wage rolled in by 10%. The following year, under the leadership of Sunak, it went up by another 10%. This year, thanks to changes in national insurance, even with the national minimum wage increase, it only went by 7%. Our Labour government is getting inflation under control, but while we undo 14 years of damage, we're willing to support our grassroots venues, so when we get back to best days, we can all go out for a dance.
Thank you very much. Councillor Booker, you're next. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Ignite the night, you bet. Music's been a very large part of my life since I was a child. Music is about heart and soul, something you can't judge pigeonhole or put a price on. When words fail, music speaks. Music is worth the effort, and nobody does it better than Sheffield. The negative effect of the night time economy because of the lack of buses is a real problem for people who want to socialise and enjoy live music in Sheffield, which I said is some of the best music there is. I know that councillor Ben Miskel is working on a transport franchise, which I support, and I hope will improve our bus service night and day. The city's music and musicians are second to none. They are the pride of Sheffield and the envy of the world. I support this motion.
Thank you very much. Now you became my favourite. It's a stolen green, innit? So councillor Ruff?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this motion and the amendments before us because they recognise not only the challenges facing Sheffield's music and night time economy, but also the incredible work already happening in our amazing city. We should all applaud the formation of Love Kellam, a brilliant example of independent businesses coming together to make running a business more collaborative, safer and definitely more rewarding. This is exactly the kind of grassroots leadership we should celebrate and all look to support. Sheffield is one of the UK's safest cities, and that's not just by chance. Our night time industries have worked tirelessly in partnership and winning some national awards such as the National Best Bar Non-Award this year is proof of that success. These partnerships, like Safe Square and anti-spiking campaigns, are making a real difference and we must sustain them. The amendments also strengthen the motion by ensuring the Yorkshire Ambulance Service is part of the conversation on safety and by reaffirming that these initiatives are not just ideas, they are actions already being delivered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Atkinson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sheffield City Centre is going through major redevelopment. We're seeing new venues, independent businesses and cultural spaces breathe life into the city. If we want that growth to last, we need to make it easy and safe for people to stay out later, and that means fixing our night time transport right now. Right now, buses in Sheffield drop off by 60% at night, one of the steepest reductions for any major UK city. For a city with universities and a strong night time economy that's holding us back, buses should be cheap, safe and reliable, a reliable way to get around no matter the time of day without them. Students, hospitality staff and music fans are often left with few options to get home, and that puts people at risk. It also puts pressure on grassroots music venues and late night businesses that are already struggling with high costs. Sheffield's nightlife is one of its key assets, rich in music, culture and community. So a proper public transport system that runs late into the night would support that economy and make the city feel more connected. But this, it's also about safety, particularly for women and vulnerable groups. They often feel least safe at night time when the services are most reduced. I strongly support there to be emphasis on a women's safety charter, working with venues to help people feel safer and more supported at night. If we want Sheffield to be a welcoming, modern and thriving northern city, we need to match our ambition with the infrastructure to support it, and that starts with better night buses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do apologise to councillor, across from councillor Miskel for not finding the time, but I have to, I've only got two minutes for councillor. Rise to reply, could you please?
Thank you. I think from a number of the speeches, we have shown that we've got some fantastic events, venues, nightlife spots across the city that should be championed. The one point that I wanted to raise was councillor Bannister. These costs are having an impact. It was noted by the Dorothy Pax in their closing statement. It's also why the Night Times Industries Association has got a campaign asking Rachel Reeves to reverse the decisions on business rates. On the comments regarding Oliver Copard, he has spoken many times about his franchising wish for the buses, but never once mentioned night buses. I would like to note that he also already runs the trams and has made no comment on that. But what we have seen here is aggressive agreement, that we all really care about that, and that's what we, as Liberal Democrats, when we run the council, will have. We think about everyone in the communities, we think about what improves the economies, but more importantly, what gives people hope and lets them have fun. And that's what the people of this city has a chance to vote for in May. It is a, it's a Labour Party that just whacks on costs willy-nilly and shutting venues down, or it's one that gives, a council that gives people a good time. And I started the motion off with one word smith of the English language, and I shall finish with another, to quote Chumba Wumba in their headline song, Tub Thumping. I thought that the music mattered, but does it? Bollocks, not compared to how people matter. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Language, yeah? Although it's very entertaining, please, can we maintain that language, sir? So we move, I'm now moving to the vote on the amendment number one, moved by, yeah, moved by councillor Moyenham, which will be conducted using an electronic vote system. Unless we have anonymous support for the amendment, is this amendment agreed? I will take the silence as an affirmation of the meeting, is it agreed? Or if any amendment wished to dissent? Please raise your hand. No, please don't, okay. Please, can I remind? Okay, that's carried unanimously. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I didn't hear you, sorry. Thank you councillor Hurst. Please can I remind members of the council that there will be a time limited of 30 seconds for the conduct of each electronic vote? Please ensure that you have logged into your microphone consoles. Instructions of the voting procedures can be found on members' desks. For any reason, you are unable to log or have difficulties registering the vote, please raise your arm before the voting is concluded to seek assistance. Thank you. May I remind members that the vote in, on amendment one, number one, moved by councillor Laura Mayenham? Councillor Hurst, can I just make, are you voting in parts? Can you put your mic on, I can't hear you?
We are voting in parts, Lord Mayor. In abstaining, we're voting, in abstaining, we're voting four point four.
Thank you councillor Hurst. Can I ask that the vote be commenced now and request that members complete the two steps of the voting process within 30 seconds? Thank you. Ten seconds left. Lord Mayor?
He just has to think about fixing it and it works.
We'll do a wave later.
Of whom the bell tolls? Mr Bean has decided for whom the bell tolls. Chief Justice.
So seventy-one is for six abstain. The motion, the amendment is carried, thank you. Amendment number two, I'm going, I am now going to move to the voting of the amendment number two, moved by councillor Johnson, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system. Unless you have anonymous support for the amendment, is the amendment agreed? Thank you. If it's dissent, then we'll go to?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We'll be voting for amendment two and we'll be not voting in parts. Where possible going forward, we'll be avoid voting in parts to make it easier for the public to follow what we're doing, so it's more transparent going forward.
Thank you very much.
Just on amendment, sorry.
Yeah.
Lord Mayor, sorry, we wouldn't have called dissent for this, but it seems we're voting anyway. In voting for, we are abstaining on part three.
Thank you. That's noted. Okay, may I remind members that the vote is on amendment number two, moved by councillor Johnson? Can I ask that the vote to be commenced now and request that members complete the two steps of the voting process within 30 seconds? I think this 30 seconds is working, because a lot of people are just very, so. Seventy-two, four, one against and four dissent. Amendment is carried, thank you. I am now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system, unless we have anonymous support of the motion. Is the substantive motion agreed?
Dissent will be.
Or dissent, thank you.
In voting for the motion, we're voting against the originals, L and O, and abstaining on P.
Yes, councillor Hurst.
Lord Mayor, in voting for this motion, we're abstaining on any parts that we abstained on before.
Thank you. May I remind members that the vote is on the substantive motion? Can I ask that the vote to be commenced now and request that members complete the two steps of the voting process within the 30 seconds? Thank you. Thank you, well done everyone. Seventy-six, four, one against. The amendment is carried, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, notice of motion regarding disability benefits cuts and supporting Sheffield residents. There is a maximum time limited of 25 minutes on this item. May I call councillor Elliot to move the motion? You may speak up to three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Today, I'm proposing the Green motion, opposing disability benefit cuts and supporting Sheffield residents. I wish we didn't have to put forward a motion like this, in all honesty, but here we are. When I was talking to my 12-year-old this morning about why I need to come to work today, and I was explaining about the cuts, and I asked him, what do you think I should say? And he just said, well, it's obviously not right, is it? So that, that set the tone for me. And when you think about the human cost of reducing sickness and disability benefits, it's obviously not right. Putting disabled people into poverty will not provide people with a route towards employment. You cannot, on the one hand, threaten benefit cuts that penalise disabled people, and then with the other, assure people that they will be given the support they need. These are completely mixed messages. What we need, along with a fair benefit system, is an access to work scheme that really works, not the worrying 35-week waits we're hearing about. I know this isn't mentioned in the Labour amendment. Cutting access to work will only increase the unemployment rate for disabled people. This is a scheme that needs enhancing and not destroying. It's obviously not the right thing to do. Thankfully, this is a motion of two halves, and what we are proposing will hopefully help some of the people in Sheffield who are facing chaos and confusion as a result of this bill, trying to navigate the system and understand their rights. We know that the South Lac pilot, the income max pilot, has been a success, giving free advice to people in community centres and food banks, specifically helping people with bills and making their money go further. The roles that have been created in the South Lac are financial navigators, and they are a real asset because of their skills. And those skills could be expanded to benefits advice and employment advice, for example. So in October, the S and R committee will decide whether to roll this pilot out across the whole of Sheffield. Greens envisage face-to-face advice in all of our communities. So please, no watering down, it's face-to-face advice that makes the difference. Not everyone has the internet or the capacity to make a phone call. If people get good advice early on, it massively improves lives. That's good for people, good for communities, good for the local economy and good for health and wellbeing. The list goes on, please support our motion.
Thank you councillor Elliot. Councillor Argensio, you're up next.
Thank you for enunciating my name so beautifully, Lord Mayor. So the life expectancy and quality of life of individuals is heavily impacted by their income, education, ethnic group and where they live. More importantly, the life expectancy of people is also impacted on whether they have a disability or not. Disabled people live, on average, 20 years less than non-disabled people. Without, this is why it's so important for me, this is really, you know, something I work on every single day. Without face-to-face support and advice, vulnerable people will find it more difficult to access the support they need to ensure they get the benefits they are entitled to. Government, both local and national, play a crucial role in addressing these inequalities and ensuring vulnerable people are helped to get the benefits and support they are entitled to. And ensuring that they get the support they are entitled to is vital. The South Lac face-to-face income maximisation pilot has played a crucial role in this, in helping people access benefits and boost their income. This is really important because we often speak, talk about early intervention and prevention, and having that face-to-face support can prevent people falling into poverty, which in turn means they could get ill and their life expectancy and quality of life may, you know, be impacted. At a time when the government is proposing to make it more difficult for vulnerable people to access benefits, it is important that we do all we can to give people the best shot at getting what they are entitled to. That is why we are calling on the council to roll out the successful South Lac pilot across the whole city. Of course, this would not be, we would not be in this position if the billionaires and millionaires paid their fair share of taxes, but it seems that that is not on the Labour agenda.
Thank you so much, thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers three and four on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call councillor Basharat to move the amendment number three? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, I'm pleased to move this amendment. The welfare reforms have been proposed to help people who have the potential to work into jobs. This includes a one billion investment in employment support measures. Those measures include pathways to work at regional level. This scheme offers personalised for key workers, the barrier busting funds connecting individuals to employment and skilled services. And, Lord Mayor, I know from my work in Netherdome and Sharrow, especially working with businesses on London Road and Abidah Road, and many who are unemployed can actually be supported through this. The reforms also include the largest ever increase in carers allowance. This will allow working carers to earn more before losing their entitlement. The proposed changes together ensure those who are sick and people with disabilities have the resources and opportunities to live with dignity and achieve their full potential. These proposals and recent government measures on wages, childcare and school costs are welcome. However, as a city, we can do more and must show leadership. Lately today, I will be proposing a motion including a Help Sheffield programme rooted in fairness and compassion and working hand in hand with our community, faith and voluntary partners who are already on the frontline. This programme will focus on practical solutions, ensuring residents get the support they are entitled to, preventing hardship before it takes hold, protecting people from scams and backing grassroots projects that cook costs and build resilience from food corps to repair cafes. So, colleagues, this amendment is about more than easing pressures. It is about building hope and opportunity. It is about a city that refuses to leave anyone behind, that is, leadership through community and supporting people into work.
Thank you councillor Basharat.
And commend this amendment.
Thank you. May I call councillor Felbit to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It does feel a little as if the Green motion has been got down off a shelf and dusted down a little bit as it refers to a bill that's been substantially updated and funding like the Household Support Fund that is being replaced by the Crisis and Resilience Fund. However, I am broadly supportive of the motion when it starts to move away from government bashing and scaremongering and actually focuses on the issues that face people with disabilities and the support that they need. And I think... And I think that's how Sheffield MPs approached this question when it was debated in Parliament. I particularly like to thank Marie Timble, MP, for her impassioned contribution to the debate on this. I believe that had a great deal to do with ensuring that there is going to be a thorough review of the PIP system before any changes are implemented, and that review is scheduled to take place over the course of the next year and report next autumn 2026. That's a necessary review. There are huge challenges around the size of the UK welfare bill, and I do note that neither the motion nor the Lib Dem amendment have any serious analysis or solutions around that. But we must ensure that both those who cannot work due to a disability and those who could, if they have the right help, that they receive the correct support that they need to lead fulfilling lives and dignified lives. I'm the parent of an adult son with a disability, and I've seen the difference that being in employment makes. My son had support to get into work, and as a result, he lives a life that is much fuller. He has financial independence, he has the confidence to travel independently, he has the confidence that comes with having a job and not being completely dependent on PIP or on his family. Schemes like pathways to work and connect to work, the increase in carers allowance, they're not just a way to bring down welfare costs, they're a route to independence and to dignity for many who need it the most. So please, support this amendment and offer real support to people with disabilities.
Thank you, councillor. May I call councillor Sophie Crossthorn to move amendment number four? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As many of you know outside of this chamber, I work with disabled adults and children. And councillor, when you talked about scaremongering, but you can imagine my dismay and horror when I walked into a service and onto shift to speak with some of the members that I support, and they were absolutely beside themselves with worry and anxiety of what the Labour government was planning to do, and they did not know what that meant for them. This isn't what people voted for. People voted for change, and supporting people that need it the most is exactly what government is for. It's about—this is about disabled people, the families and their carers, and it's about the providers that are involved in looking after them. People didn't vote for disabled people to have their benefits cut. They didn't vote for their carers to be burdened with unnecessary worry and stress, and they didn't vote for their providers of care to have a jobs tax hiked upon them with employers' national insurance contributions. Now, when you cut financial support like PIP and universal credit, the cost of being disabled doesn't simply go away, it gets shifted onto loved ones, friends, and carers. And for many people living on the breadline, the cuts like this will push them firmly below it. Now, cutting support without any plan to reform social care also puts the cart miles before the horse. There's been plenty of government noise on NHS reform, but not a peep on social care, and there is no NHS without it. We should all be raising our voices to call for a plan for social care before 2028. Now, our amendment reaffirms this call, as well as the call made at Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee, where we wrote to the Chancellor to exempt care providers from employers' national insurance contributions. It calls on the Department of Transport to put money in lifelong disabled people's pockets by stopping their unnecessary blue badge renewal, and it calls to support young carers to get around with free travel. Now, at Sheffield Adult Health and Social Care, we say that we want to support people to live the life they want to live, and if we're going to get on with that, the Labour government needs to stop abandoning its values, and we all need to step up for disabled people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. May I call councillor Clement Jones to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It must surprise people who know me to—I fully support this Green notice of motion. These proposed cuts to benefits risk making already vulnerable people's lives more insecure, causing them worrying and anxiety. As our amendment says, this climb down shows that at least some of the stress and anxiety caused by this was entirely unnecessary, and the government just seemed to be flying a kite and worrying people unnecessarily. Unpaid carers provide essential support, often saving this council money and many councils' money, and we have a duty to do all that we can to support them. If the person they care for loses access to benefits, that could remove their carers allowance, even though their caring responsibilities haven't changed. This isn't just unfair, it's harmful. It risks pushing them into hardship and making caring unsustainable for them. When people lose benefits, they often turn to the council for extra help—emergency payments, housing support, social care. God forbid that they should resort to payday lenders or even worse. We know there are worse out there. Cutting national support doesn't remove the need, it just shifts the burden. Without proper reform of social care, we will just stay on this unsustainable merry-go-round of cuts. And I think, really, we need to say that Liberal Democrats do have a plan, and we've had a plan for years and years and years. Nobody listens to us. We want reform of social care. Everybody is running scared of it. The Liberal Democrats are not. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you so much. We now move to the debate of the matter, but before we do that, because we're going to go straight into voting, can you make sure you're all logged in, Mick? Are you logged in? So can I call councillor Crossthorn, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Now, I need to start with an apology for the chamber, actually, and to correct the record. In a previous council meeting, I once called the Prime Minister Sir Kid Starver, but I clearly underestimated him. It turns out he's happy to starve anyone who actually needs support. It's mind-boggling that when it comes to balancing the books, the Labour government don't look at those with the broadest of shoulders, they look at those who need help. Whether it's your grandma with winter fuel support, your local shop with their national insurance bill, or the biggest ever cut proposed to Britain's disabled people. Now, I want to say what this actually means as somebody who does rely on personal independence payment. This support is extra dry cleaning for me because I can't see if my shirts are stained or not. This is support for taxes—if I've got 30 minutes between meetings and public transport would take two hours. This is support for technology to help me do tasks that most people take for granted. Research by Scope actually shows that disabled people face a bill of over £1,000 extra per month. So this government should be trying to solve those injustices, not make them worse. The very fact this was even considered by the government should terrify anybody who voted Labour because it just proves that they've lost their values. And of course, this council should stand crystal clear that we will not stand by while the government hurt those who are most vulnerable, and that's why I am supporting this motion today.
Thank you. Can I call councillor Rove to comment to the mic?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Esteemed colleagues, this is not a technical debate, it is a moral test. The Red Army's plan to cut benefits for disabled people and carers is not just wrong. It is cruel, it is unjust, and it is economically reckless. It is targeted cruelty. Let's be clear, this is not about saving money. The Disability Policy Centre warns that for every pound cut, councils across the country will face £1.15 extra costs, including us here in Sheffield. That means more pressure on our already stretched budgets, more demand on food banks, and more families pushed into crisis. It is a false economy that pushes the vulnerable and costs us all. We in Sheffield have shown what works. Our South Lac income maximisation pilot has already put real money back into people's pockets. Expanding face-to-face advice is not optional, it is essential. This motion calls for that expansion and sends a clear message to the Red Army: Stop targeting those who can least afford it. Target the billionaires instead. I'm not done. Colleagues, this is about who we are as a council. Do we stand with disabled people and carers, or do we stay silent whilst they are pushed into poverty? I urge every member here today to vote for this motion. Stand up for fairness, stand up for dignity. Please, stand up for Sheffield. Thank you.
May I offer the right of reply to the mover of the motion, councillor Elliot? You may speak up to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for an interesting debate and for the amendments. We fully support the Lib Dem amendment. And there were some interesting comments from Labour colleagues. I like what councillor Basharat said about leadership through community, and I don't doubt that local councillors champion this, but with all due respect to Labour councillors, it is your government that has set out to be facing multiple disadvantage and barriers to participation. So this is definitely not scaremongering. We will support some of your amendments in the spirit of optimism, in the hope that some of the schemes you mention will actually be effective. And we do absolutely recognise the U-turn, it's down to amazing campaigners, and some MPs—credit to the Labour MPs who couldn't stomach the cuts and voted against them. There were two in Sheffield, but sadly four who voted with the government line. And the government now finally talk about co-design, but how can something be described as co-design when it's actually asking sick and disabled people to help produce something that is going to make their lives harder because it's based on cuts? This is a conscious policy choice not to tax income from wealth and instead put the burden on people facing multiple disadvantage and barriers put up by society. The Get Britain Working paper produced in November set this all out. It set the intention to continue the Tory cuts. And unfortunately, until we see a major policy shift where the super-rich pay their fair share, it's hard to believe things will actually get better. I do hope to see it, though, and there is still time to get on board with the wishes of most of the population and tax the rich instead of the sick and disabled.
Thank you very much, councillor Elliot. I am now going to move to the vote on the amendment number three, moved by councillor Basharat, which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support and amendment. Is this amendment agreed or is there a dissent? Thank you.
Lord Mayor?
Sorry, can I ask anybody move voting in parts to send? Go ahead.
Take it in abstaining, we are against three and four, four.
Thank you, councillor Alton. Councillor Donald?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for amendment three, we're against part three.
May I remind members that the vote is on the amendment number three, moved by councillor Negat Basharat? Can I ask that the vote be commenced now and request the members to complete the two steps of the voting process in 30 seconds, please? Thank you. Thank you. The score is 45, four, six against, 24 abstain. There's two that have been voted. Where's my hammer? Yep, there's one missing. Maybe one's somebody left? Okay, so 45, four, six against. So this is carried in parts, but part three was lost. Okay, amendment number four. I am now going to move to the amendment number four, moved by councillor Sophie Crossthorn, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support of the amendment. Is the amendment agreed?
Dissent.
Thank you. Are you going to vote in parts?
We're just abstaining.
Abstained. And councillor Host? Yeah. May I remind members that the vote on the amendment number four, moved by councillor Crossthorn, can I ask that the vote will be commenced now and request the members to complete the two steps of the voting process in 30 seconds? Thank you. It's not on the screen yet. There you go. Voted in 16 seconds. You guys are doing good. Thirty-nine, four, and thirty-eight abstain. It's carried. Thank you. Now we move to the substantive motion. I'm now going to move to the vote of the substantive motion, which will be conducted in electronic voting system unless it's unanimous support and motion. Is this motion agreed? Dissent.
Dissent.
Moving in—anybody voting in parts? Yeah, go ahead.
On the motion, we're voting for but against the original A, G and L, and abstaining on C and the parts from amendment four that we abstained on previously.
Councillor Host?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for, we're voting against and abstaining as we did on the amendments.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we're abstaining again on Labour Amendment Part One that we abstained on before.
Thank you. I am now— Okay. Oh, sorry.
Just to confirm, in voting for the Labour Amendment, we're still voting against three, part three.
Thank you. May I remind the members that the vote is on substantive motion? Can I ask that the vote be commenced now and request the members to complete the two steps of the voting process in 30 seconds, please? Motion is carried and voted in 11 minutes, seconds. Good. Well done. Item number nine, please. Settle down, everyone, please. Can I ask the councillors that leaving the room to let us know that you're leaving the room? They'll be back in two minutes. Too late now, isn't it? There's a window of chit-chatting now. Let's go back to item number nine, please. Notice of motion regarding not in our name. There is a maximum time limit. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes on this item. May I call on councillor Zahira Nas to move the motion? You may speak up to three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Today I rise to speak on one of the greatest moral issues of our time, the genocide unfolding in Gaza. We have seen this genocide livestreamed into our homes in real time every day for months. No one can now say they did not know. No one can claim ignorance. We are all bearing witness. I have seen with my own eyes a reality of apartheid in Palestine. When I visited, I saw checkpoints that humiliate, walls that divide, families cut off from each other, children denied dignity and freedom. I bore witness to how Palestinians are treated under occupation. In the turn of Tuba, in the Jordan Valley, to the north-east of Nablus, while we were meeting with the governor and councillors, news came of an Israeli army action. We found ourselves, along with the governor, officials and a TV crew, making an unscheduled visit to Ibsack Primary School. There I saw firsthand Israeli soldiers had torn down the tent that replaced an EU-donated classroom. We saw the distress this caused, even though the children showed resilience by continuing their lessons in the open sun. This small amount, moment reflects the daily devastation of demolitions and daily harassment faced by Palestinians. I also experienced this brutality myself. When I tried to enter Al-Aqsa Mosque, IDF soldiers stopped me at gunpoint, refusing me entry until I proved who I was. That moment showed me the daily humiliation Palestinians face simply trying to reach their place of worship. And now we see Gaza bombarded, starved, besieged, entire neighbourhoods flattened, hospitals destroyed, aid convoys blocked, thousands of children killed. This is not a war against terrorism, it is a collective punishment of our people. The world has seen the bodies of children pulled from beneath the rubble, the world has seen hospitals without medicines, mothers without food, fathers digging graves for their own children. Let us name it for what it is. This is a genocide. Human Rights Watch, Save the Children, Amnesty International, and only this week, the world's foremost group of genocide scholars have all said the same. Israel's policies and action in Gaza meet the legal definition of genocide. And I must say this with honesty, our Labour government has not gone far enough. Too often it has chosen caution when the moment demanded courage. Too often it has sought balance when what was needed is justice. That is not good enough for Gaza, it is not good enough for Palestine, it is not good enough for us. Our government must act now, not tomorrow, not when the dust has settled, but now. We demand a permanent ceasefire, we must end all arms sales to Israel, and we must recognise Palestine as a state. The double standards must end. The UK government cannot say stop all weapons when F-35 jets continue to kill Palestinians. The UK government cannot say it will send aid while spy planes fly over Gaza. I failed to stop the war crime. I hope, colleagues, today you will be able to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nas. First on record, you are not my favourite. So councillor Menesh Perkar, you're up next to second this motion, please. You've got up to two exact minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Over the last two years, we've seen unbelievable horrors unleashed on the people of Gaza. The United Nations has said that the worst-case scenario of famine has taken place, with widespread starvation, malnutrition and disease. This is politically derived. The genocide is being carried out through the Israeli government's deliberate obstruction of food, mass shootings at aid distribution points, and the relentless bombing, reducing one of the most densely populated areas of the world to rubble. We are seeing the failure, an utter failure, of the international community to prevent a genocide. Compared to other recent wars where there have been coordinated sanctions from nation states, the global response has been broadly one of indifference. It is shameful. It is shameful that we're here again in this chamber urging the government to do more. But the government must end any potential complicity with the Israeli government and must use every available lever to force an immediate and permanent ceasefire. It should go without saying that no arms or weapons parts should be sent to Israel. It should go without saying that we should end all trade links immediately. We should expel the Israeli ambassador, sanction all Israeli officials, and arrest anyone who enters the country and is responsible for war crimes. And at a local level, we have a responsibility to act as well. Local authorities have a statutory duty to minimise harm. That necessarily includes standing against apartheid and acting to prevent genocide. This is why we are instituting procurement policies to uphold human rights, peace and justice. Public pension funds must not directly or indirectly fund war crimes, and this is why we continue to call on the South Yorkshire Pension Authority to end any culpability. In the 1980s, this council was a leader in the anti-apartheid movement and cut financial links to South Africa and divested pension funds to help isolate that regime. Local authorities must rise again to isolate Israel, to ensure international law is upheld and that its genocide ends. I urge you to vote for this motion.
Thank you. There are three proposed amendments, and these are number five, six and seven on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call councillor Smith to move the amendment number five? You've got up to two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The humanitarian catastrophe in Gaza is simply unconscionable. Hamas still holds hostages in brutal captivity, and Palestinian lives have been devastated by the ever-expanding Israeli military campaign. When the ceasefire in Gaza came into force earlier this year, there was some little bit of hope that this horrendous conflict might come to an end, enabling the alleviation of the humanitarian catastrophe in Gaza and allowing the release of all of the hostages. But since the resumption of Netanyahu's military campaign in Gaza, the suffering of Palestinians in the Strip has just reached new extremes. We've all been appalled at the abhorrent aid blockade with food being used as a weapon of war, and reports of indiscriminate attacks against Gazans seeking life-saving supplies. The Netanyahu government also wants to lock the whole population of Gaza into what is effectively a giant internment camp. A plan that is basically ethnic cleansing. We cannot turn a blind eye to the level of destruction being levelled on Gaza. The national government must do everything in its power to persuade the two men in the world that could stop it right now, President Trump and Benjamin Netanyahu. Lord Mayor, people expect their elected representatives to show moral leadership. Our message is simple, and it can be summarised in just four words. For God's sake, stop. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. May I call councillor Curtis Crossdon to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be honest, I have stopped turning on the news because you can literally see with your own eyes the horrible scenes, and I can't watch it. It's horrible. You can see families being torn apart, homes being destroyed, and lives being devastated. The UN has confirmed that over half a million people are facing famine, millions more have been displaced, and schools, hospitals, aid centres have all been bombed. Now, I'm proud that my party has consistently been calling for an immediate bilateral ceasefire and a full humanitarian access to Gaza. We need aid to flow freely, and while airdrops aren't a substitute for opening land routes, they are desperately needed to save lives, and those air aid drops are something that our government could and should do. We also have been clear that the UK must end its arms exports to Israel, including F-35 components, to ensure that we are not complicit. However, Lord Mayor, I believe that we can't just stop at holding these views. The Prime Minister needs to act on them, including lobbying other world leaders. Because, let's be honest, Donald Trump has the power to get the hostages released and get aid so desperately needed into Gaza. The Prime Minister must be willing to have those difficult conversations with Donald Trump. But I do fear of a situation where Trump visits the UK, he's honoured with state dinners and palace receptions, yet no one is prepared to be honest about him, about the horrific starvation and death in Gaza. To end, Lord Mayor, I want to repeat the words that one of my constituents said to me the other day when I was delivering a leaflet, that I think most people in Sheffield will agree with, and that's just stop the killing.
Thank you very much. May I call councillor Diamond to move the amendment number six, please? You've got up to two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It may have taken 22 months of mass killings, deliberate starvation, and the murder of tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of people, over 30% of them children, but I hope that this motion signals that all members of this council are finally waking up to what Israeli leaders have made explicit since the start of this genocide, if regrettably not the Labour government's direct role in it. As I pointed out at full council back in November 23, the Israeli government has been crystal clear about its genocidal intent. Then Defence Minister Yoav Galant promised that Gaza won't return to what it was before, we will eliminate everything. No one here, and no one in the Labour government, can pretend that they didn't know what Israel was going to do in Gaza and what they have done for the last two years. But that didn't stop Keir Starmer from saying Israel had the right to withhold food, energy and water. I'm sure Netanyahu and the Labour friends of Israel continue to thank him for this. Israel's crimes over the last two years include murdering nearly 2,000 medical workers, kidnapping and torturing medical workers, murdering over 200 journalists by far the highest recorded number in any conflict in history, and often along with their families; murdering nearly 400 aid workers, killing 1,400 people queuing for aid; deliberately starving a captive population of what was 2.4 million people, half of them children again, but may now be as low as 1.7 million. Despite this undeniable genocide, our government continues to arm Israel and support them, and as we have heard, and is even reportedly considering a new $2 billion contract with Israeli arms manufacturer Elbit. Enough is enough. The genocide must end, as must Israel's occupation and apartheid system, and our government's historic and current support for it. Please support our amendment to strengthen this motion so that this council takes genuinely meaningful actions. People of conscience in Sheffield who stand for universal human rights...
Thank you, councillor Diamond. I'm going to have to ask you to sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Please note your conscience.
Thank you. Thank you. May I call councillor Kaboo, please, to the mic?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this motion, and our amendment aims to support and strengthen this. I find it very difficult to add to what has already been said in this room. And actually, when I think about what's happening in Gaza, I do go abstain. So anyway, what I want to say is, why have we waited so long to actually bring a motion to this council? It's nearly two years. In these two years, over 63,000 Palestinians at least have been killed, 160,000 injured, and that's over 50,000 children killed or injured. And it's still happening. What are we going to do about it? There's a lot of talk about the need for evidence and proof before we use the word genocide. A few days ago, the International Association of Genocide Scholars declared that it is genocide, and that the conduct of the Israeli government meets the legal definition as laid out in the UN Convention on Genocide. Israel has systematically attacked the facilities needed for survival, the healthcare, the education, the aid services. It's demolished housing, it's destroyed agricultural land and the means to survive. It's assassinated healthcare workers and journalists. There's arbitrary detention, there's deprivation of food and water and medicine. What more do we need to see? But the ICJ has not yet made a determination, the International Court of Justice, and apparently we have to wait for a determination from this court before our government can do anything. The court has given Israel until January 26 to present its defences. This might be too late for the people of Gaza. How much more evidence do we need? As people have said, Sheffield stood firmly against apartheid in South Africa. Let's continue this prior tradition and stand up for Gaza. We need an immediate ceasefire.
I'm so sorry. Do you want to get a glass of water? You okay? Can I call councillor Alhad to move amendment number seven? You may speak up to two minutes, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. With regards to the motion, it's too little two years late. The motion said today does not go far enough. People should not forget the silence from Sheffield Labour councillors. After so much pressure from protests and boycotts and Labour losing votes, this motion still doesn't have the courage to say it's a genocide. They still don't call it genocide, only plausible genocide. Doesn't have the courage to admit the Labour's party complicity in this genocide, it doesn't challenge Labour's policy, it only goes along whatever started happening from the top down in the party. Sheffield Labour supported flying the Israeli flag in solidarity with Israel, but left flying the Palestine flag to the council officers to decide, dodging to tell us throughout their two years why Islington Council intends not to renew with Barclays Bank as usual after they received unsatisfactory answer. Therefore, I believe this motion should be amended, and I've added my amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to mention...
Miss David.
Lord Mayor, councillor Alda has mentioned an amendment, and that's a technical amendment that he'd like to make. It's in relation to ensuring that his amendment is consistent with the language we've used throughout the motion itself and the other amendments in relation to how we refer to Israel. So I think the request is to change paragraph two so that it says the insertion in paragraph B of the words "due to the Israeli government's act of terror" after the word worsened, the wording that's already in there. So with the approval of the meeting, then that amendment can be made.
Thank you.
Councillor Alhad, is that okay with you?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Thank you. Can all the council members agree, please? Or not agree? Agreed? Okay. May I call councillor Maru Farouf to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This motion is important, but our amendments make it honest and uncompromising. We cannot hide behind cautious language when international experts and human rights organisations have already said it. Israel's actions in Gaza amount to genocide. That is the reality, and this council must say it clearly. Call it what it is, genocide. Conditions have worsened due to Israel's acts of terror, mass starvation, relentless bombing of schools, hospitals and aid centres. Are you not outraged that the leader of the Red Army publicly stated Israel had the right to cut off water to Gaza? That is political cover for collective punishment and incitement to genocide. We should all condemn that without hesitation. This government ain't never been neutral. It is actively complicit through arms sales, intelligence sharing, diplomatic protection, and its refusal to hold the Israelis accountable. It enables these crimes, and this is not an isolated failure. It is part of a shameful record from the Red Army. The invasion of Iraq, the occupation of Afghanistan, and now political cover for Israel's assault on Gaza, while continuing military cooperation with India and ignoring Kashmiri self-determination. Colleagues... Colleagues, this is about moral clarity. Do we stand with international law, human rights and justice? Or do we allow complicity and silence to make us bystanders to genocide? I urge you to support this motion, support these amendments, colleagues. Speak with courage and truth. Stand with the oppressed, not with the oppressor. I formally second this, thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to the debate on the matter. Can I call councillor Marouf to the mic, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think the feeling in this room is extremely strong today, and whatever I'm going to add to it is just not going to be sufficient. So a lot of the things have already been said. We really can't turn a blind eye to this. There's a huge amount of devastation that's taken place, people's lives have been lost, people's... I mean, it's unimaginable that you lose everything that you've actually built and it disappears overnight. The suffering of the Gazans has reached new extremes, the abhorrent aid blockade with food being used as a weapon of war, which councillor Smith has mentioned earlier, and the discriminate attacks on people seeking food and medical attention. That cannot be acceptable in this world at this present time. The Lib Dems have consistently led the way in pressing the UK government to do more. We were the first major UK party to call for a full ban on military exports to Israel. We are the leading party in the UK actively campaigning for the recognition of Palestine as a state, and I'm glad other people are joining us on this now. We want an immediate ceasefire, we want an end to what is happening there, and this needs to happen immediately with Keir Starmer now meeting Donald Trump at a state banquet. I know he meets him regularly, but at the state banquet, our leader, Ed Davey, has taken a stance, which is that he is going to actually boycott that. The reason he's boycotting it is clearly been stated by councillor Smith earlier, he is one of the men who can actually stop this. Every time this is raised at the UN, it gets vetoed by America. Every time it's mentioned at ICJ, it gets vetoed again. So we can completely keep going on this circle, we're not going to end up anywhere, it's going to get vetoed. That is one man who can actually end all this. The question I put to the other parties is, are Labour or are the Conservatives, in the form of Keir Starmer or Kemi Badenoch, are they going to be boycotting this banquet that is likely to take place? And I'm not sure about the Greens, I don't know whether they've been invited or not, but I'm sure-
Thank you very much councillor Marouf. Thank you. Could I call councillor Dale, please, to the mic?
Thank you. Councillor Marouf, can you turn your- Thank you, Lord Mayor. I stand in support of this motion, and like many people, I felt paralysed and unable to express effectively the rage and grief that we feel at the atrocities that have unfolded in Gaza. And like members across the floor, I've felt unable to continue watching. The International Court of Justice has ruled that the Israeli government is plausibly complicit in genocide. Since then, conditions have only worsened, mass starvation, millions displaced, and the destruction of schools, hospitals and aid centres, all while the world watches. The deliberate obstruction of aid, baby formula, food, water, medicine must be condemned. The UK government not be complicit, we must demand a permanent ceasefire, an immediate delivery of aid and support for international justice through the ICJ and the International Criminal Court. But this motion is also about our responsibilities at home. Public money, our pensions must not be invested in companies complicit in war crimes. And as colleagues have said, Sheffield has a proud tradition, we were the first European city to recognise Palestine, and we stood against apartheid in the 1980s, and today we must show the same courage. This is about justice, this is about solidarity, and this is about humanity. I urge colleagues to stand with the Palestinian people and support this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can I ask councillor Sophie Crosson to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In 2015, I went on a delegation to Bosnia to learn about the Shrevenica genocide. I met survivors of the war, I visited the thousands of graves at Potichari, and I spoke with the brave mothers of Shrevenica that were left behind after those atrocities. Now, one mother had lost all three of her sons, they'd all been brutally murdered, and she'd only ever been able to bury the two shin bones of her third son, and she died without knowing where the rest of him was laid to rest. Now, what happened there was appalling, and the international community had vowed never again. In 2019, I went to the Palestinian West Bank, and there I saw the difference at either side of the border, the long delays experienced by our guide at the checkpoint, the conditions from the people living there, and the narrow dirt road that connects the West Bank that was known as the Valley of Death, it's so dangerous to drive. Now, one of our group had had dinner with his Israeli hosts in Jerusalem that night, and they've actually found that there was something really strong that was in common. Everybody had known someone that had been killed, maimed or injured as part of the ongoing conflict, and they too lived in fear. And that's why I think it's so brave that the people in Israel right now, who are burning their IDF conscription notices and refusing to perpetuate Netanyahu's war. The killing has to stop, the hostages must be released, and the atrocities have to stop. Fear takes so much time to unpick, trust takes a lot of time to build. But what gives me hope is that one of those mothers of Shrevenica could find it, she could find it in herself, to forgive, not to perpetuate. And I think if Netanyahu could find it in himself to have some ounce of that strength of character, we might get somewhere. What happened in Bosnia happened because of a failure to act, and we said never again. It's all men and women separated, murdered and brutal suffering that we now see again 30 years later. We must act so that no other mother has to go through that pain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I call Nivea Malana to the mic, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to colleagues who have contributed to this debate. This motion is overdue, but welcome. For the last 23 months, as we've heard before, we have seen the most horrific images and videos coming out of Gaza, as Palestinians desperately share what is happening on the ground, in the hope that the international community will step in. And yet, some have questioned why a local council in Sheffield should take a stand on Gaza. Now, the answer is simple and undeniable. When injustice is funded with public money, when our pensions and procurements risk being complicit in war crimes, we are compelled to act. And Sheffield has never been a city that turns its back on global injustice. This city's history speaks for itself. From standing with the Chilean people to joining the boycott against apartheid South Africa, Sheffield has proved that injustice abroad is very much our business, because solidarity knows no borders. And as trade unionists, we understand this deeply. When workers in Sheffield refused to handle apartheid cargo, they weren't only defending freedom thousands of miles away, they were defending the principle that our labour, our money and our silence will never be used to prop our oppression. And we must also be clear, this genocide in Gaza is not solely the product of Israel's actions. Behind every bomb dropped, behind every Palestinian killed, and behind every bulldozer flattening a refugee camp stands the economic, political and military power of our world leaders. This genocide is armed with weapons manufactured here in Britain, bankrolled by the United States, and shielded diplomatically by successive UK governments, and sadly, in this case, my own. And that is why this motion matters. It demands accountability, it backs the International Court of Justice and the International Criminal Court, it insists that war crimes be investigated and that arrest warrants be enforced against all perpetrators, regardless of rank, title or office. It demands that the UK government end its complicity in this genocide, and calls for the expulsion of the far-right Israeli ambassador, who has shamefully described the Nakba, the historic dispossession of Palestinians, as, quote, "an Arab lie". Sheffield cannot end this apartheid and genocide, but Sheffield can choose where it stands. And I have to disagree with my colleague, I think this motion is incredibly clear about where we stand, and it is incredibly clear about what actions we call for. We have never shied away from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I call the last speaker, Mr. Qiyun Hili?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's difficult to know where to begin with this absolutely horrendous, heart-wrenching situation in Gaza. With worsening conditions on a daily basis from day one, the Israeli government has continued with this deliberate starvation of Palestinians and obstruction of essential supplies, continuous indiscriminate bombing and the displacement of millions of people. And if that's not enough, they have sunk to a new law of bombing and killing people at their so-called aid distribution centres. We all need to do whatever we can to bring this to an immediate end, and that includes the UK government taking more action and upholding international law. Lord Mayor, with tens of thousands already killed, children literally slaughtered and buried under rubble, and almost the whole of Gaza flattened to the ground, the world cannot just stay silent and stand by whilst this genocide continues. It's not enough to stand on the sidelines and just condemn these barbaric actions of the Israeli government. We need urgent action by the UK government, and indeed by the rest of the world. We need to stand with this Palestinian people, and we need to bring this to an immediate end. Lord Mayor, I note that whilst this is a motion predominantly in support of and focusing on Gaza, councillor Caes' amendment, as mentioned by councillor Rauv, mentioned the Kashmiri self-determination in their amendment. Now, if that's a measly attempt at politicking with two very important issues, let me be absolutely clear, myself and my Labour Party colleagues fully support the right of the Kashmiri people for self-determination. We have been part of many Kashmir supporting demonstrations here in Sheffield and beyond, we have raised the Kashmiri flag outside this town hall, and this council has passed motions in this very chamber in support of Kashmir. Just as we do with the Palestinian people, we will always stand with the Kashmiri people. Lord Mayor, I'm proud to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. May I offer the right to reply to move of the motion, councillor Zahira Nas, you may speak up to two minutes, please?
Thank you, thank you, everybody. It has been a very emotional afternoon, listening to people's speeches today. Some of the, some of our colleagues here said that we, our language doesn't go far enough, but if you read our motion, point D, we're actually stating that the government must not be complicit in this genocide. It was right in November 2023, this whole chamber voted to condemn the Israeli government's bombardment of this Palestinian people. Today, we've built on that statement with our motion today. We were the first council in the UK to call for a ceasefire. I'm currently chairing a cross-party working group to review our ethical procurement policy. I just hope that everybody here today will support our motion, and thank you very much for your contributions.
Thank you. I am now going to move for a vote of amendment number five, moved by councillor Smith, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have anonymous support of amendments. Is the amendment agreed? Dissent?
In part?
So, we're voting for part one, but abstaining on part two.
Any more amendments? Thank you. May I remind members that the vote of the amendment number five, moved by councillor Smith, can I ask that the vote will be commenced now and request the members to complete the two steps of voting process in 30 seconds? Yeah. Thank you. 75, 4 and 1 against, but there is, one is supposed to be 77, right? Yeah. Thank you. Motion and amendment is carried. Amendment number six, I am now going to vote, I am now going to move to the vote of amendment number six, moved by councillor Diamond, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless the anonymous support of the amendment. Is the amendment agreed?
Dissent?
Dissent, thank you. In part?
We're just voting against, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, councillor Host?
In voting for, we're voting against parts three to eight.
Thank you. May I remind members that the vote is on amendment number six, moved by councillor Diamond. Can I ask that the vote be commenced now and request the members to complete the two steps of the voting process in 30 seconds, please? 75, we need few more. Come on, guys, you were doing so well. Have we lost someone? Can, whips, has somebody left?
Councillor Orton.
One of the whips.
Councillor Orton.
Councillor Orton? Can't see him. Okay. 58 against, 18 4, thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
These are not radical steps. You could not vote it for them, and it's a matter of shame that you have not.
Thank you.
You each of you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Well, where's the security? Can we not have a conversation up there? Because I'm being really nice, so can we not have a conversation there, please? Thank you. Yeah, can we not have a conversation up there? Can we not, can we not shout down? Excuse me? That is, that's disgusting. Thank you. I am now, amendment number seven, I am now going to move to the vote of the amendment number seven, moved by councillor Alhadl, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have anonymous support of the amendment. Is the amendment agreed?
Dissent.
Dissent. Okay, in part?
So in voting against, we will be voting for, points three and nine.
Thank you. Councillor Booker?
Lord Mayor, in abstaining, I'll be supporting F1.
Just voting against, Lord Mayor.
May I remind members- May I remind members that the vote is on amendment number seven, moved by councillor Al-Haddad. Can I ask that the vote be commenced now and request that members complete the two steps of the voting process within 30 seconds, please? Thank you, thank you. Hello everyone, sorry about that. So, because the numbers are very, very tight, we're just going to concentrate on now voting on part three and part... Can I not have a conversation there, councillor Dale and Nas? Can you just listen? So, we're just going to do it in a different part, so part three and part nine, because we can't tell the numbers, it's very, very tight. Thank you. So, cast your vote on the amendments, part three and part nine. Thank you. Just to remind you, it's amendment seven, amendment number seven.
Until we've actually checked our possession on then?
Yes. Yes. Good idea. Yes. So...
Are we stopping the vote?
Stop, pause the vote, we're going to pause the vote. Just have a conversation for two minutes, please. Amendment number seven, parts three and part nine. Okay, everybody must have had a conversation, so let's get back. Councillor Hurst, you guys are ready? Voting amendment number seven, number three and number nine, okay? So, cast your vote now, please.
Are the 30 seconds up now?
All good? Seventy-five? It was seventy-six? Okay. So, we're down to seventy-five. So, amendment three, thirty-six, four, thirty-eight. Yeah? One abstain? And thirty-eight against. The whole of number seven amendments has been lost. Right, we're moving on to the substantive motion. I am now going to, I am now going to move to the vote of substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have anonymous support of the motion. Is the substantive motion agreed? Dissent, dissent. Okay, in part? Councillor Diamond?
In voting for, we're voting the same way as we did before on the lift-end amendment.
What's that then? What? Councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, I've just got to wait for my screen to turn back around again.
Okay.
Went sideways while I put my hand up.
No problem.
There we go.
I will be abstaining on substantive motion and supporting F1.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for this motion, we were voting the same way on amendments part six and part seven as we did for the amendment.
Your group? Okay.
Yeah, nothing from part, nothing from amendment seven passed, did it? No. Amendment six and seven failed, so yeah, we're just voting for...
May I remind members that the vote is on substantive motion? Can I ask that the vote be commenced now, requesting that the members complete the two steps of the voting process within 30 seconds, please? Thank you. Seventy-three, four and two abstained. Amendment is carried. Motion is carried, sorry. Long day. Okay, because we passed the guarantee, we've got to, so no speeches anymore, so it's just yes or no, thank you, move it or second it. So, item ten, notice of motion regarding help Sheffield supporting communities and residents. May I call councillor Nigah Poshra to move the motion?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Riddle to second the motion?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
There are two proposed amendments, or these are number eight and nine, and the list of amendments circulated in the meeting. May I call councillor Atkinson to move amendment number eight?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call councillor Sapwell to second the amendment?
Lord Mayor, councillor Sapwell has had to leave, so I am happy, I will happily formally second the amendment.
Thank you, thank you. May I call councillor Elliot to move amendment number nine?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, formally moved.
Thank you. May I call councillor Kaboo to second the amendment?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I am now going to move, move to the vote of amendment number eight, moved by councillor Atkinson, which will be conducted in electronic voting system unless anonymous support of the amendment. Is there, is the amendment agreed?
Dissent, Lord Mayor.
Is there a part?
We're just voting against, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Okay, may I remind the members that the voting amendment number eight, councillor Atkinson, can I ask everybody to, voting system, please, commencing now? Seventy-five, one more person? No? Councillor Sapwell? Councillor Sapwell? We're down to seventy-four, yeah. So... So, thirty-nine, four, thirty-four against, one abstain. So, this amendment is carried, thank you. Amendment number nine? I am now going to move for the vote of amendment number nine, moved by councillor Elliot, which will be conducted in the electronic system unless we have anonymous support of the amendment. Is the support agreed?
Dissent, Lord Mayor.
Dissent. In part?
We're voting against.
Anymore? Okay, thank you. May I remind members of the voting of amendment number nine, moved by councillor Elliot, can I ask for you to vote now? Thank you. Thank you, seventy-four votes in, forty agreed, three against, one abstain. The amendment is carried. Fantastic. Substantive motion, I am now going to move for the vote of substantive motion, which will be conducted in electronic voting system unless it's a substantive motion agreed?
Dissent, Lord Mayor.
Dissent, in part?
Yes, in voting for our motion, we're voting against the parts of amendment eight and nine are carried, done, which is all.
Thank you, Matt. May I remind members that the vote is on the substantive motion? Can I ask everybody to vote now, please? One more vote, you're always number seventy-four. Thirty seconds is gone. Thirty-three. Thank you. Sixty-seven, four, one against, five abstain. Amendment is carried. Somebody has not voted. Don't know if I should bring a bigger hammer next time, but it's not voted. Item eleven, notice of motion regarding improvement, improving Muslim burial services. May I call councillor Al-Haddad to move the motion?
Just like to say during the debate...
No, 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 you say yes or no, 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 this is not your stage.
I'd like to know that.
This is, no, no, no. This is yes? Move, formally move, do you have it for?
I'll move the motion now.
Thank you. Councillor Marouf, sorry, councillor Rauf to second the motion, yes or no?
Formally.
Thank you. There are two part, there are two proposal amendments, and these are number ten and eleven in the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I, may I, may I call councillor Al-Qayyum to move the motion, number ten?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. May I call councillor Hussain to second the amendment? Calypso? It's not, yeah. We did say, check the mics. May I call councillor Chris Crossthorn to move the amendment, number eleven?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
May I call councillor Marouf to second the amendment?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I am now going to move the vote of amendment number ten, moved by councillor Qayyum, which will be conducted using the voting system unless anonymous support on the amendment. Is the amendment agreed? Thank you. Amendment is carried. Amendment number eleven, I am now going to move for voting for amendment number eleven, councillor Chris Curtis Crossborn, Crossthorn, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless it's anonymous support for the amendment. Is the amendment carried? Yes, so the amendment is carried, crossone? Moving to the next one. Substantive motion, I am now going to move for the voting of substantive motion, and which will be conducted using electronic voting system unless it's anonymously support of the motion. Is the substantive motion agreed? Yes, no? Dissent? Yeah. In part, councillor Hurst? Okay. Okay, so we're going to go to the voting system, everybody is logged in. May I remind members that the vote is on substantive motion? Thank you. Seventy-four. Seventy-four? We're still seventy-three? We're gonna give everybody a dig. Come on, guys. Still seventy-three. Breakfast! So sixty-seven, four, one against, five abstain. Motion is carried. Well, you want transportation, so the bell is here for that. So item thirteen, appointing of independent co-opted, co-opted members of the Audit and Standards Committee. Item twelve, sorry. Changes of the council's constitution. This item of business is withdrawn from the consideration at this meeting. This is because some of the changes proposed to be made to the constitution relate to changes to management responsibilities for property or facility managers in the council. But there has been a delay in the transfer of those functions. The changing, the changes to the constitution will be resubmitted for approval at the future meeting of the council, once the transfer has been implemented. Item thirteen, appointing. Can I have a, can we listen? Appointing the independent co-opted members of the Audit and Standards Committee. This item of business is to improve, to approve the appointment of two non-voting independent co-opted members to join the Audit and Standards Committee to oversee and assess the council risk management control and cooperative conferences arrangements. The proposed appointments has to be recommended following the recent recruitment exercise and further details to set out in the report of the General Council, which has been published with the agenda for this meeting. The motion is to approve the appointed of Oslim, Arakan and Hoshan Kalimaurethi, a non-voting independent co-opted members and of the Audit Standards Committee for a four-year term of September twenty twenty-nine. May I call councillor Grove? Deputy Chair of the Audit and Standards Committee to move the motion?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
May I call councillor Doye to second the motion?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I am now going to move for a vote, to the vote of the motion. Is the motion agreed? I will take silence as affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. The motion is carried anonymously. Item number fourteen, minutes of previous council meeting. It is proposed that the minute of the orderly meeting of the council held within the ninth of July twenty twenty-five be approved as the true of the accurate record. In that motion, formally moved?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion formally second?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Is the motion agreed? Yeah. The motion is carried. Item number fifteen, membership of council bodies representative to serve on other bodies and related issues. It is moved by the councillor Mary Lee, seconded by councillor Joe Otten, that the council notes that the changes made of the membership, memberships of committee and other council bodies, the appointed representatives to serve external bodies and related issues and approves that the further changes to memberships and appointment all as detailed as scheduled circulated at this meeting. Councillor Lee?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Otten is not here, so.
In councillor Otten's absence, I will formally second that, thank you.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Urgent items are settled down. Urgent items of businesses, item number sixteen, rescheduled of the order. Gonna be on my naughtiness. Order of the notices of the motion at the council meeting in October and November. Council procedures rule twenty-six states that an item of businesses may be considered at the meeting of the council as, as a matter of urgency, where it has not been possible to give five clear working days notice on the recommendation of the chair, but the reason for such urgency must be recorded in the minutes. It is proposed that the council gives, council gives approval of the council Joe Booker's notice of motion to be rescheduled for the council meetings of the first of October to the meeting of the fifth of November. The whips of the political groups on the council have been consulted and this proposal and support is rescheduled. However, that consultation with all the political groups on the council has not been completed prior to the publication of the agenda for this meeting. The decision needs to be made at the meeting of the council to ensure that the correct allocation of notice of motion of the October and the November meetings. For these reasons, I propose we deal with this at an urgent item of the business of the meeting. The motions of the reschedule. Councillor John Booker's notice of motion from the council meeting of the first of October twenty twenty-five to the meeting of the fifth of November twenty twenty-five. Is the motion formally moved?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion second?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Is the motion agreed? The motion is carried. This concludes the business of today's meeting. Thank you all for your attendance. Thank you.